Here.
Sims.
Here.
Peadmont Smith.
Here.
Sandberg.
Here.
Sandberg.
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Volin, it seems, is not here, and I would like to add, Madam President, that Councilmember Rallo has some family issues to deal with, and since he can't vote on a fee increase, he will not be here via Zoom either. Thank you.
Councilmember Volin is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's continue with our land and labor acknowledgement for the city of Bloomington. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge that they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many Indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward, knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. Let's continue with an agenda summation. We have no minutes to approve this evening. We'll then therefore move into reports, including reports from council members, reports from the mayor and city offices. Included there is the annual tax abatement and economic development commission report, any reports from council committees, and then that will take us to our first of two periods of public comment. We'll then take up appointments to boards and commissions, if any. We will then go to legislation for second readings and resolutions. Included there is Resolution 2308, authorizing the allocations of the Jack Hopkins Social Services Program, funds for the year 2023, and related matters. Ordinance 2312 and ordinance to amend ordinance 2226, previously amended by ordinance 2240, which fix the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2023, regarding to reflect updates needing implementation in 2023. We then go to ordinance 2313 and ordinance to amend ordinance 2225, which fix the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana, for the year 2023, re to reflect increases in compensation to certain firefighters. We then move to ordinance 2311 to amend Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code and titled Health and Sanitation regarding updating and increasing fees for service and harmonizing Chapters IV and V of Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code. We have no legislation for first readings this evening. That will take us to our second of two periods of public comment. We'll then take up matters of council schedule, and then we'll adjourn. So with that, we have no minutes for approval this evening, so that takes us directly to our period of reports, beginning with reports from council members. I'll start on my far left. Councilmember Volin.
I have no report, but I would ask that in future meetings that we start on the other side as well as the far left. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I have something I wanted to say. We've been talking about trash increases recently, and I know this is just kind of a, to some of you, might be a minor issue. I have a couple of things I want to say about this. Social equity has been invoked by some of my colleagues to justify increasing trash increases for homeowners in Bloomington. This is a fundamental misunderstanding of what social equity means.
Point of order. Aren't these reports not supposed to be on the items that are on the agenda this evening?
Not, Councilmember Smith, would you care to hold your comments until we take up that legislation?
Oh, sure. Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any additional report?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sandberg?
Just to say, there will not be a constituent meeting for Rallo Sandberg this Saturday. We're taking a brief hiatus, and we'll resume in July. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I actually do have my monthly constituent meeting on Saturday. It was usually on the second Saturday this month, on the third Saturday. It'll be at 11:00 a.m. in the McCluskey Room here in City Hall, and there's also a hybrid option, and you can find the link on the city council page, bloomington.in.gov/council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Just have really a comment to make. I just want to acknowledge the fact that, and many of you may already know this, the recent death of Judge Viola Tellerferro. I would be remiss not to acknowledge that. She was definitely a gem and very valuable to our community. I don't have time to give the entire bio. I mean, I think it's exhaustive, as many of you know, but very well-known for her judgment, her caring for what she did in youth and family court for many, many, many years. And as many of you know, she was the wife of George Tellerferro, which is a whole set of history on its own. But quickly, I mean, I wasn't involved with her court, thank God, but I did hear a lot of good things. However, my reflection is about 35 years ago, Judge Vi, or we just call her Judge Vi, invited my wife and myself to her house for an evening. And if you knew me back then, I'm thinking, you know, they're a little older than us. Why would I want to do that? But when I got there, now, not only was it George Vi, or Judge Vi, but her husband, George, was there, of course, and many of you will know some of these names. Dr. Audrey McCluskey was there, and her husband, John. Jean Devane was there, and his wife, Gladys. And they included us. They invited us, and they were great mentors. There was great mutual respect, and they listened to us. And, I mean, I've done a lot of things in this town since we've been here over four decades, but when I look back on things, that was one of the pivotal things that got me involved and to the point of where I am today because of mentorship, including folks, listening, and mutual respect. So most people will say RIP. I'll say rest in heaven, Judge Vi. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thanks. Just a brief comment. I want to make folks aware that this week we have a lot of meetings and public engagement opportunities for the College and Walnut Corridor Study. There is a city website for it, bloomington.in.gov/collageandwalnut, and there are meetings that folks can pop into during the day tomorrow, and then there is another public meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 here in council chambers, where folks are going to be talking about, like, just some very loose potential ideas that can happen, so you can come and say what you like, what you don't like, and what you might want to see, if anything, to be different. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have no report this evening as well. That takes us to reports from the mayor and city offices, including the annual tax abatement and economic development commission report. I believe we have Mr. Crowley and Ms. De La Rosa with us.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Alex Crowley. I'm the Director of Economic and Sustainable Development. I'm going to give you some brief opening remarks, and then Dee De La Rosa, who's the Assistant Director for Small Business, will take you through the meat of the presentation that we have this evening. We'll be open at the end for questions and happy to answer any of them. So what seems like a bit of a routine process, where we come to you every year, give you this tax abatement presentation, there's nothing inherently exciting about tax abatements, is actually a pretty important step. And the reason it's important is because we are caretakers of public money. And as you'll see in the presentation, a lot of public money is invested in the outcomes that you'll see this evening that we'll detail through the active tax abatements, and some others are proposed for the future, and in a lot of these cases, very successfully. So the outcomes that we were seeking at the time of the tax abatement have, in fact, you know, happened, and that's an important thing to recognize. We've made some changes this year. We improved the presentation somewhat from last year. You may recall, last year's presentation significantly overhauled the previous format. We thought it was a lot clearer to present it the way we did last year, and we've made some improvements on it this year. It is Dee De La Rosa's first time doing this. Mercifully, none of us is born knowing how to read a SB1 form and how to analyze a tax abatement, but she's done a really good job, and it's particularly important for us to have continuity in the ability to do this task annually, particularly with the turnover of administration. So we thrust her into it. She's done a really terrific job, and I want to thank her for her work. We've also added another function in the process. We've brought in an outside group, Stone Municipal. Adam Stone is on Zoom, or will be. The reason, they are a municipal accounting firm, and we brought them on so that they can be a third party to help us take a look at not only what we're analyzing this year, but also to help us think about a couple of things, how we might improve things for the future, and I'll get into that in a minute. This is, we have to acknowledge, an imperfect system, and there are a couple of imperfections that we should draw attention to. Number one, annually, people file what are called CF1 forms, and you'll see that represented. They are chronically not user-friendly. We have major accounting firms serving major corporations submitting forms and not doing it correctly. We were even on a phone call this morning trying to get some clarity on some of the forms that were submitted with a significant accounting firm. So, and they reiterated, these are not helpful, and so we got a lot of information in. We've had to chase it back and forth over time, and we do this every year. The second imperfection is that while we take the not-required step of communicating well in advance to tax abatement recipients that they should be submitting their form, not everybody does, and they don't do it on time, and so we have to chase them down sometimes. And in fact, this evening, we'll talk to you a little bit about a situation that we have where we have not yet received the CF1 form, so there's no way that we can actually recommend that particular tax abatement. There's a process associated with that. And then the last imperfection in the system is that there's actually a regulatory compression of time. So the annual abatement reporting is due on May 15th, and there's a very short window before you all leave, and you need to be making a judgment on these in that compressed window, and all of that analysis, all of the back and forth, all of the chasing people around, has to happen within that window. So that's why you've got some, a couple of versions of this thing over the last couple of days, and I apologize for that. We were updating it in real time as we were getting better information. So, a couple of highlights from this year. Number one, the Economic Development Commission unanimously approved staff's recommendation last Friday, so just a couple of days ago. We appreciate Councilmember Flaherty, who serves as your representative on the Economic Development Commission, being part of what ended up being actually a pretty lively discussion. There were some issues and challenges, and the EDC, the Economic Development Commission did a nice job, really kind of probing on certain parts of our recommendation. We do have, as I mentioned, one gap this evening, so we did not receive one CF1 form, which is the reporting mechanism, and you'll see that's related to Urban Station. And then we also wanted to discuss Catalent in some detail, as that's a complex series of tax abatements. So in terms of future improvements and analyses that we want to do, and now that we have Stone Municipal to help us, number one, it bears repeating, something that we actually have heard from the outside, that we do a pretty good job, all things considered. If you look at other municipalities, there are examples of municipalities that really don't do this kind of analysis, even at the level that we're doing it right now, much less what we intend to do. So a lot of rubber stamping going on, that sort of thing. As you know, every year, we take a hard look at this stuff, and so, you know, I think we are operating at a pretty high level, but there's room for improvement. So the first improvement that I see is that we are, at the time of asking for your approval on a tax abate, making certain assumptions. We are assuming, we know the value that the applicant intends to make into a project, whether that's an affordable housing project or an investment and commercial project. And so we know that, and we have to make an assumption about how that will ultimately be assessed. That is just an assumption, and you'll see it represented. We are not, they are not committing to an assessment. We don't really know how it's going to get assessed, and so we're just taking, we're making a rule-of-thumbs kind of assumption, and so when we say to you, hey, the value of this abatement over the period of time that we're proposing is X, that is a guess, because, again, there's so much variance in terms of how things are assessed. So that's the first thing. The assessment changes over time, which we are, you know, at the time, unable to predict what that's going to look like. And then the other thing that changes over time is the tax rate. So all of those things come into play. So when we come to you and we say, hey, we think this tax abatement is worth doing, here's what either the gross value or net present value of the abatement is, recognize, number one, that it is an assumption, and then, number two, that we are hoping to improve the system so that we can come back to you and do a kind of real-time annual analysis of what we thought was going to happen and how it's actually played itself out. And then we also want to look at policy, at tax abatement policy, regularly over time. We've done it a couple of times already in my tenure at the city. Want to keep doing that, get outside feedback of how we can improve our policies, and so I think Stone Municipal can help us with that. So as I said, I will be available with Dee. I may handle more of the questions, because, again, she's kind of new at this, but we're happy to answer any questions. Larry Allen is also here to be able to answer questions, and I will turn it over to Dee De La Rosa to take it from here.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Dee De La Rosa. I'm the Assistant Director for Small Business Development in Economic and Sustainable Development Department. I will be presenting the staff report and tax abatement compliance and EDC activity for 2022. Before I begin, I'd like to thank Stone Municipal Group for their partnership. We in ESD anticipate a continued partnership with Stone to aid us in monitoring current and future abatements and helping us to improve policy to enhance the overall impact of this incentive program. We'll cover several items, including an overview of the compliance review process, the evaluation criteria, the economic impact of the city's active abatements, and specific details of residential, commercial, and not-yet-active abatements. We will continue with a summary of the commissions and other 22 activity. After the presentation, ESD and Stone Municipal, hopefully, will address any questions for the council. In an earlier draft we presented to the Economic Development Commission on June 9th, we gained their unanimous recommendation to advance it to the council this evening. The annual reporting process compares the taxpayer's commitments from the initial statement of benefits to self-reported results in an annual compliance form, or CF1. The taxpayer submits the CF1 by May 15th each year to the county auditor and the city clerk. The city has assigned the Department of Economic and Sustainable Development responsibility for compiling and reporting to the Economic Development Commission and the council. The EDC forwards the final report to the council for any action. The EDC recommends approval for new applicants, the common council authorizes, and the county administers the abatements. The city of Bloomington general standards for tax abatement program require the creation of capital investment in one of the following: an increase in full-time, permanent, living-wage jobs, an increase to existing wages, or the creation of affordable housing units. Other evaluative criteria considered during the application process are quality of life and environmental sustainability, affordable housing, community service, or community character, which refers specifically to art, local business, or historic preservation. ESD receives an application and statement of benefits, also known as an SB1, to authorize a new tax abatement. If the application and SB1 meet the review criteria, ESD brings the application to the Economic Development Commission. The EDC then recommends it to the common council for approval for an economic revitalization area, or ERA, as well as an abatement term and schedule. The common council has a two-step process. It reviews the staff memo, the EDC resolution, and supporting documents before approving and designating resolution. Then it holds a public hearing and approves, if applicable, an affirmative resolution. If an abatement is approved, it allows for the in-phase of property taxes on new assessed value. The term of abatement on real property is one to 10 years, and the term on personal property is typically 10 years, but may go up to 20. The designating body either approves a set abatement schedule or provides an alternative deduction schedule. This slide compares actual investment against proposed investment on the original SB1 forms by type of abatement. You can see that the total actual investment was $128 million over the proposed investment. As the sole mixed-use taxpayer did not file, you will see that indicated by DNF, which stands for did not file. These abatements have added and retained 3,282 jobs with an average 2022 salary of $56,000. CF1 average is not adjusting for partial employment nor temporary jobs like construction, other non-permanent employment, and unknown salary information from some businesses that may be leasing space and mixed-use developments, non-reported information and commission benefits, which may have accounted for the lower overall wage when you see the difference between this SB1 and this CF1 average salary. The total actual new improvements value of abatement projects is 192.6 million, twice the proposed total value of the SB1s. The NA that you see there is due to Urban Station not filing, as it is the sole mixed-use abatement. The actual new improvements are based on CF1s or actual assessed value listed per the Monroe County Assessor. The SB1 is an estimate of proposed results by the taxpayer, so we do not demand accuracy on the assessment. An SB1 is an estimate, not a commitment. This is a map of the tax abatements that we have active currently in our city. The green pins designate the real property, and the yellow pins designate personal property, and you can see there are multiple abatements at Catalent, so those are all stacked on each other, so I promise there are two green pins behind it. Because all tax abatements must meet a but-for threshold, the AV increase reflected in the previous slide would not exist without the support of the tax abatement. These incentives bring residents investments in quality of life, like new and retained jobs, affordable housing opportunities, expanded economic vibrancy, a direct and indirect increase in assessed value, and investment in challenging sites. Turning to the compliance of specific abatements, we will start with residential. Southern Knoll is a 31-unit affordable housing complex. All of Southern Knoll's units are affordable to households at or below 80% of the average median income. At least 75% of the units are affordable to housing at or below 60% of the AMI. Seven units are set aside as permanent supportive housing for individuals experiencing homelessness. Seven units are set aside for persons with developmental disabilities. Real estate improvements are complete, and the property is 100% occupied at this time, and the staff finds this abatement to be compliant. This property is in its third year of abatement at 98%. It exceeds the proposed benefits on the CF1 in capital investments, new employment, and salary. It is compliant with affordability requirements, and the current assessed value is nearly $700,000 at 69% of its SB1 estimated value. Union at Crescent is a 106-unit mixed affordable housing and market-rate housing. No less than 70% or 120, or, I'm sorry, 102 units are allocated to households with incomes at or below 60% of the average median income, and at least 20% of the units are at market rate. Currently, Union at Crescent actually has 104 units that are allocated to affordable housing. Real estate improvements are complete, and the staff finds this compliant. Union at Crescent is in its year four of its abatement. We have received confirmation from Housing and Neighborhood Development that they are in compliance with their commitment to 70% of their units dedicated to affordable housing. It has met compliance requirements for capital investment and jobs created and has exceeded its salary requirements. The current assessed value is at $3.5 million and has attained a 30, I'm sorry, 53% of the estimated $9 million originally proposed by the taxpayer. The staff will engage with the county regarding the current assessed value, as we would like to better understand how it is being assessed. Some of the abatements are substantially more or less, depending upon the real estate investment as opposed to its assessed value, so we'd like to dig a little deeper into seeing how the county makes those assessments. Urban Station is a mixed-use building with 7,000 square feet of commercial space and 148 bedrooms. No less than 15 bedrooms will be allocated to households with incomes at or below 80% average median income. Rent for affordable units may not exceed 85% of the market rate, and the affordability must be in place for 99 years. At this time, we cannot recommend applying the abatement for 22 pay 24, because we do not have enough information to assess due to the lack of a CF1. Urban Station would be in year six of its abatement and did not file its pay 2220, I'm sorry, pay 2324 CF1. We have attempted to contact the taxpayer on several occasions, including earlier this year, to remind them about their CF1 obligations, and most recently, over the past week, to determine why they did not file. The taxpayer made petition to continue the abatement with a waiver of noncompliance and council resolution. The Foundry is a mixed-use building with 30, I'm sorry, 13,000 square feet of commercial space on the first and second floor and residential condominiums above. Its public benefits are redevelopment of a parcel abutting the Beeline Trail and retention and creation of new economic jobs for growing local technology business. Real estate improvements are complete. The taxpayer no longer plans to make the personal property investment related to this abatement. Given the changes in technology, it doesn't seem feasible for the abatement to continue or the abatement to start on personal property. The staff finds this abatement to be compliant. The Foundry is in its year four of its real property abatement. The Foundry has exceeded its capital investment commitment. It complies with jobs retained, exceeding new employment expectations, and their respective reported salaries. Its current AV on improvements is $19,261,200. City staff will engage with the developer to clarify its salary classifications. The question that we have, and this is also kind of part of the form reporting problem, is that if you see the new salaries and the new employment, it kind of, you kind of infer that the $6 million is being applied to the 38, as opposed to being applied to the entire 92 total. So obviously, it's probably something that we should look into, although if you do the math, it does come out right, but we'd like to see how we can make that a little bit clearer for next year. Hoosier Energy. Hoosier Energy filed the CF1 much earlier than the due date, so to comply with the 45-day review. This abatement has already been presented to the common council and approved, and this is a review of our report. Hoosier Energy holds a real property abatement for its lead certified headquarters on the southwest side of Bloomington and is a growing local business with consistent job retention. It is in its, it is in year six of its abatement. It is in its, it is in year six of its abatement. It has exceeded capital investment and salary requirements and remained compliant in jobs retained. Its AV on improvements is nine million, is over $9 million, 45% of its estimated $2 Woolery Mill. Woolery Mill holds a real property abatement for its development off Top Road. Its public benefit is renovating an abandoned limestone mill into a mixed-use facility and rehabilitation of the mill to historical standards of the Secretary of Interior. Woolery Mill Ventures completed Phase 1, the event space, in May 2019. They have substantially met their investment and construction timeline for Phase 1 requirements. The property owners continue to work to develop Phase 2, but have been significantly delayed given a variety of market pressures. It is compliant with tax abate requirements. The Woolery Mill is in year four of its abatement. It has filed its employment and salary commitment, I'm sorry, it's filled its employment and salary commitment. Its AV is 1.9 million and is at 40%, 47% of its estimated SB1 assessed value. City staff will engage with the county regarding the current assessed value as we are unclear how it is assessed.
Mr. Del Rosso, just a minute here, 20-minute mark for this section of the report. Obviously, it's important to the information. I'm guessing that we want to extend the time for this particular section of the meeting?
Yes, I move that we extend the portion of the meeting for reports from the mayor and city offices by 15 minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you, council.
Catalent holds two active abatements and one passive abatement. The active ones are 1506 for personal property and 1904 for both real and personal property. The passive abatement is the one the council most recently approved last year via Resolution These abatements cover separate expansion phases and employee growth projections. The city's initial abatement was with Cook Pharmica, which was acquired by Catalent, Indiana. Real property and personal property abatements have distinct phases. CF1's report blended employment figures across the abatements. CF1 data reflects the total annual payroll and year-end headcount. Catalent's 2022, Resolution 2206, abatement is pending. In other words, the company has chosen not to trigger the abatement benefits via submission of a CF1 form and therefore not included in the compliance assessment. The staff finds this abatement compliant with proposed commitments. Abatement 1506 on personal property is in year five of 10. New personal property investment exceeds SB1 commitments. The current AV is 5.7 million, 57% of its estimated 10 million. Abatement 904 on real property is in year two and exceeded capital investment commitments. Abatement 904 on real, I'm sorry, on personal property is in year three and exceeded SB1 capital investment commitments. And the current AV on improvements for 1904, both real and personal property, is $85 million. This slide outlines Catalent's job growth across all active abatements. Job growth complies with retainment commitments and exceeds new employment commitments in 2022. As of the filing of the CF1, the total site headcount was 2,983 people, but that number has declined with recent employee action. This slide addresses salary growth across all three abatements. It has exceeded targets on total salaries and new salaries. Retained salaries skew low because Catalent reports a total annual salary against the year-end headcount. However, Catalent confirmed that when the monthly headcount and the month, I'm sorry, the monthly headcount and the monthly payroll are taken together, the average wage of the Catalent employees is $66,200 annually, or $31, $31.80 hourly. In summary, personal property capital investments for 1506 exceed commitments. Real and personal property investments for 1904 exceed commitments. Cumulative employee growth significantly exceeds commitments. CF1 data reflects the total annual payroll and year-end headcount. Therefore, staff recommends a finding of substantial compliance for Catalent across all abatements. The following two abatements have received formal approval from council but have not yet been activated. I referred to it earlier. Catalent Resolution 2206 approved real and personal property abatements for Catalent for a total, I'm sorry, for a total capital investment of $350 million and 1,000 jobs at an average salary of $32 per hour or $66,500, I'm sorry, $66,560. Catalent has not triggered this abatement at this time. Catalent has until December 31, 2026 to substantially comply with the terms of this abatement. Real America received a real property abatement for its 48-unit affordable housing development adjacent to Switchyard Park. Its project broke ground on June 22 and is under construction. The anticipated completion date is late 2023. Other Economic Development Commission activity for 2022. January real property and personal property tax abatement for Catalent, Indiana LLC, passed by the Bloomington Common Council in February of 2022. Compliance on or before December 20, I'm sorry, December 31, 2026 at $315 million in real and personal property investment and 900 new jobs. I'm sorry, that figure is actually wrong. It should be 1,000. June approved project expenditure for financing agreement for citywide fiber internet with Hoosier Networks LLC, Meridium. Part of the creation of a new tax increment financing district for business property. In October, recommended issuance of the Economic Development Revenue Bonds for the renovation of Country View Apartments at 2500 South Rockport Road. The renovation of 206-unit affordable apartment complex receiving Indiana Low Income Housing Tax Credit, or LITIC, Rental Housing Tax Credit, RHTC. Thank you so much for bearing through that with me. I appreciate the council's time, and if you have any questions, I will turn it over to Alex Crowley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Del Rosso. Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Are there questions from council?
If I may clarify one thing that, so you noticed on the Catalent, the passive Catalent tax abatement, it was listed as $315,900. That was actually correct because it, because they have to achieve 90% of their commitment. So that's how you get to the 900 jobs instead of 1,000 and 315 instead of 350 million. So I just want to make sure that was clear to you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, thank you.
For them.
Yes, so I have a question about the actual assessed value versus the projected assessed value. For many of these or several of these, it was, the actual is quite a bit less. Can you speak to that? I think you referred to that indirectly in your opening when you talked about some of the problems in the process, but can you expand on that, please?
Yeah, so I can speak to that a little bit. I mean, honestly, it's a little bit of a mystery. So how a property is assessed by the county depends on a lot of different variables, and it's very hard to predict that. In a perfect world, one would know in advance and know what the assessment was projected to be, but, but we don't have that luxury. And so what happens is something is built, and then the assessed value is looked at annually, and that assessment is made by the county, and we are reflecting that, as is the CF1 form. So one thing that you, that I should underscore is that not, in every case here, we have either confirmed the CF1 assessed value as submitted by the, by the applicant or the recipient of the tax abatement, or in the case where it was actually wrong, we've reflected in our presentation what the actual assessed value is according to the record. So it changes every year. I do agree with you that there are some inconsistencies in terms of the ratio between what was invested and what the assessment is. That's not, it doesn't mean it's wrong. It's just that we are curious about that as well and want to get underneath that a little bit better. And as I alluded to earlier, to your point, one of the things we want to do is track the actual assessment over time against the assumption made at the beginning and see if we can get a little bit more sophisticated in terms of trying to figure out what, when we come and present a new tax abatement to you, what, you know, what the model we should apply for the ratio between capital investment in that case and the assessment as it turns out in the end.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, that becomes important after the abatement is done, and then we get tax, property tax revenues based on the assessment, and if it's a lot lower than, of course, our revenue.
Yeah, and conversely, the, if there was an abatement in place, you're giving away less, but the overall benefit to the community of the tax value that we had originally expected is lower to your point.
Right, right. Crystal ball stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Oh, go ahead. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, go ahead.
I also want to ask about Woolery Mill and the Phase 1 and Phase 2. So how are those separated as far as the fulfilling the abatement terms? I wasn't sure how to tease that out from your report.
That is a complicated abatement. If you have read through, as Dea has done, this thing dates way back to, I think, 2004 if I'm not mistaken. It was started in 2004, then it was renewed at some point in the early teens by my predecessor. And then, as Dea pointed out, the work was actually completed and the assessment triggered starting in 2019. As far as we can tell, the original intent of this was that there be a pretty substantial redevelopment, but it would be broken up into phases. And the, you know, the petitioner or the property owner still hopes and is working towards trying to get those additional substantial phases done. Originally, it had anticipated a hotel and housing. Housing is still on the table. We're trying to work with them to understand what the plan is, but for the time being, all really that's being tracked in the assessed value here is the, you may be familiar with the One World Catering Facility down there. That's the, that's what's being tracked in the, in the property increase in the assessed value.
So even though the real estate investment is not at 6 million, which was the promised investment, it's, you consider it still in compliance?
We are, yeah, in fact, I think that that was, we meant to, I think in a previous version, we had that as substantially compliant. We, this is such a complicated property to work on, and so we are crediting the landowner for the, for the work they've already done. It's not at exactly the level that we had, that they had anticipated we'd hope to see. We do hope that there is that continued ability to develop further. It's a, I mean, it's a beautiful facility down there, so we really, we want to try to encourage their ongoing investment and engagement in the property. So our judgment on this is, yes, it is, it is, I think it was about a million and a half short of the, of the projected investment, but, but we, we would like to consider that or recommend to you that you consider it substantially compliant, again, with the hope that we can continue to stimulate development there.
Thank you.
Additional questions? If not, I'll finish up. Mr. Crowley, you commented that the conversation in the EDC was spirited and robust. Could you expand on that and talk a little bit about what some of the major points of discussion were?
Sure. Well, I mean, there's some data problems, so, and we've been trying to clean those up since that meeting. You know, one that, that I think we meant to flag and that Dea meant to flag in her remarks, one of them is if you take a look at the, at the assessed value for the Foundry and you compare that to the investment, there's something wrong with that picture. Unfortunately, we're working from submitted information, so we need to go back and take a look and understand what's going on there. And we believe that one of the things that might be happening in that case is that the submitted form had captured the entirety of the increased assessed value, whereas in fact, that particular abatement has only targeted to the commercial space, not the entire footprint of the building. So there's some basic, if you look, this is $17.8 million in real estate investment. There's no way that it gets assessed at 19 million, right? That, that's totally out of whack with some of the other relationships between those two. So we think that there's some problems going on. So we had a couple of those situations where the data just didn't make sense, and this being one of them. And so the, the liveliness of the discussion is because we have very engaged and thankfully so Economic Development Commissioners. They are looking closely at the numbers. They were uncomfortable with the fact that they were asked to, you know, assess something when some of the data that we were getting in was either incomplete, in some cases we filled it in, or didn't make sense. And, and so, you know, we, we were trying to basically air out some of those. But in the end, I think they agreed that the compliance is really the, the major issue. There may be some assessed value challenges like this, but that is not a commitment on behalf of the property owner. It's the, it's the, really the investment that they've committed to. And I don't know if Councilmember Flaherty also wants to speak to that, but.
No, thank you. Not really need to add more. Any additional questions? Historically, we have also invited public comment on this report. Is there any here in chambers? If you would, please raise your hand. And Mr. Lucas, could you extend the invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to comment on this annual tax abatement report, please let us know by using the raise hand feature, which you can find in your control bar under the reactions button or the more button. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Okay. I'm not seeing any comments here in chambers. Mr. Lucas, or do we have any takers on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
Okay. Let's come back to council then for any council comments. Or more questions? Or neither? Okay. So with that, is there a motion to approve the annual tax abatement report?
Madam Chair, may I make a motion regarding Urban Station first?
Yes, please.
I move that the council hold a public hearing on June 21, 2023, at the council's regular session to begin at 6:30 PM regarding new Urban Station's compliance with the statement of benefits provided as part of the tax abatement granted by Resolution 16-12. The council requests that council staff provide the required notice of this hearing to the property owner and to list, quote, "failure to file the required CF1 form," end quote, as the reason for the council's determination.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. That passes. So we will move to a public hearing on June 21. Thank you.
Madam Chair, or maybe it's the advice of our attorney, would it be appropriate to approve the rest of the tax abatement report tonight, or should we hold off?
No, I believe tonight it would be appropriate for the council to consider approving the remaining recommendations in the report. There was also Hoosier Energy, I believe, that staff noted had already been reviewed by the council, so you'd be approving the remaining recommendations in the report.
Well, then I would like to move approval of the annual tax abatement report as presented by staff.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, is there, is there any discussion, I should ask? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. That passes. So, and thank you to the staff from Economic and Sustainable Development. And we are right on time remarkably. So, so with that, we come to reports from council committees. Are there any? I'm not aware of any, but, okay. That takes us to our first of two periods of public comment for items not on the agenda. Could I have a show of hands here in council, in chambers of those who would like to offer comment for items not on the agenda this evening? I see two here. Mr. Lucas, could you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to speak, please let us know by using the raise hand feature. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions button or the more button, or you can send a chat to the host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Okay. Let's begin here in chambers. Welcome, if you would, please introduce yourself and please sign in. Welcome, if you would, please introduce yourself and please sign in. Two, three, four. And Mr. Lucas, how many takers do we have?
None, at the moment.
Okay. Let's plan on five minutes then. If you would, please go ahead here in chambers.
Just a second. Great, thanks. My name's Greg Alexander. I never know if I should respond to the updates we get from Public Works. Take this slide, for example. If he accidentally says lane miles, it looks like there's more sidewalks than street, which there isn't. But this year, he said the correct word, center line miles. We want sidewalk on each side of the streets. There should be twice as many, and there's nowhere even close to that. We're barely halfway there. I don't even want to nitpick something like that. Next slide, please. Honestly, this one felt like he was baiting me. All the numbers here are ludicrous. There isn't even a billion square feet of land in the whole city, let alone 7 billion of sidewalks. Really, I don't care that someone made a mistake. All sorts of crazy things happen when people start playing with calculators. The original slide said we have more area of sidewalks than of streets, though. I can't leave that alone. It's about five times as many. I did my own estimates using data from Public Works. They're much better than his estimates, but they're still not perfect. We have about five times as much street area as sidewalk area. Next slide, please. 95% of sidewalks in good condition. While this slide was up, the director of Public Works said, quote, "Our sidewalks, community-wide, are in good condition, and that's something I think we should all be proud of." 95% in good condition. Do you believe that? Next slide, please. Okay. Look at all that green, all those sidewalks in good condition, mission accomplished, something we should be proud of. I don't even know how to talk about something like this. My grandma, they said of her, she wouldn't say it if she had a mouthful of it, you know? It is such a severe misrepresentation. When you see such a ridiculous number, don't you know it's false? The question should be, where was the mistake? He should have asked that before he came to you guys. That's easy. I looked up the contract for the study. We didn't pay for sidewalk surface testing. They offer that product. They told us it would be $100,000 and they would test the surface condition of our sidewalks, and we didn't choose that option. No sidewalk condition study was performed. So what did they report if we didn't pay them to study it? The contract says, quote, "sidewalk condition attribute will be visually rated." So it turns out what they did, they took one photo from a dash camera that's on a truck, just sitting on the dashboard, seeing what the driver sees. And if they looked at that one photo and couldn't see the sidewalk well enough to tell that it was crumbling, they said it was in good condition. And then they marked the whole block. What an example of how Public Works views sidewalks. If they look good to the driver of car, they're good enough. The thing is, the purpose of the report last week was to explain why the upcoming Public Works budget is going to double one of the many pools of money used for street maintenance. And in support of that, the director felt it was prudent to do a victory lap on sidewalks. He's saying sidewalk maintenance shouldn't be a budget priority because we already have great sidewalks. This body has repeatedly shown it is unwilling to supervise the budget process. The only authority in the whole city that can decide to allocate money to sidewalks is using this disinformation and presenting it to you guys as if it was true, as if it was plausible. I should be able to stay at home and have dinner with my family without department heads presenting fantastic disinformation to excuse failing to fund sidewalk maintenance. If such a misrepresentation can come from such a position of unchecked authority, then this very room is transformed into a deceitful place, a place where people's work is undone. If the budget process privileges darkness and there is no room for light, then there's no point. You're being told that lies have more influence on our budget than this body does. The purpose of this body is being mocked, and the citizens are being harmed. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
Thank you. Let's take our next comment here in chambers then. Welcome. If you would, please sign in. Share your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, council. Eric Spoonmore, President and CEO of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Our organization has been around this community for 108 years. We represent roughly 870 members, 80% of which are local, small businesses, all of the businesses that we know and love that make Bloomington such a wonderful, vibrant, compassionate, and caring community. First, I want to start by echoing the remarks earlier of Councilmember Sims regarding Judge Taliaferro. It was a sad day in Monroe County and in the state of Indiana when we lost Judge Taliaferro. She was a trailblazer. She was a impactful woman leader in our community. We're thinking of her family and so much appreciate the council's kind words about her and her service in Bloomington, Monroe County. So thank you. I'm here tonight to talk about the convention center and the potential formation of a capital improvement board. I attended the meeting on Monday where several of you were at, along with county officials. And I've got to say that it was so refreshing to see city officials and county officials back at the table again, talking about this very important project that's going to have a tremendous impact on our local economy and our regional economy. And so I just want to thank you and applaud you for the thoughtfulness that you have put into, and the team that has put into the draft and our local agreement. I've read that, read it very closely. I think it's particularly brilliant. Some of the items that were written into that, particularly as it relates to the appointments, where we have the city getting, the mayor getting two appointments, where there's political diversity from both parties involved with that, the county commissioners getting two appointments, the city council and the county council getting an appointment. And then what I thought was most brilliant was that those six people will then appoint the seventh member of the capital improvement board. And I can't tell you, I don't know how it can get any more fair than that. I think also this is the ideal time for the community to create a capital improvement board, especially for this project. I know you all in the city are extremely busy with a lot of important projects that you're considering right now, particularly with the Hopewell Project. We're very excited about that at the chamber, but it's a big one. The exciting fiber infrastructure project that's going on right now within the city, it's a big one. It's going to be very impactful for our residents and our businesses. We've got a brand-new police headquarters that you all are going to have to build and manage that. So just a lot of projects going on at the city. As you know, the county's got some very important projects going on as well, too, with the jail and the criminal justice reform committees and discussions that are happening there. So, you know, especially as we're in the midst of a major transition of leadership coming to the city in the next six months, I just think it's the right time for a capital improvement board to take the reins of this project and run with it. And I think that you all are on the right track. I know that there's going to be some tweaks that need to be made with this interlocal agreement, but just want to continue to encourage you all to work with the county. It's so nice to see that happening, and we look forward to all the developments to come with the convention center. And please, as the Chamber of Commerce, you know, you know that we've been very supportive of this project since the county council authorized the food and beverage tax back in 2017, and we want to help in any way that we can. So thank you all so much. I also see a lot of our public safety officials here tonight in the room, and I just want to let you all know, chamber supports all the work that you do, fire protection and police protection. Thank you for everything that you do in our community. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore.
Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay. Next here in chambers, welcome. If you would, please sign in and share your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. Paul Post, President, FOP Lodge 88. I'm here to give you and the public a mid-year update on some topics that we've discussed with you in the past. First, BPD recently hired two more officers, and we held an open hiring process on June 3rd where 168 invitations were sent out to people expressing interest in the open positions. We certainly need it. BPD remains woefully understaffed, causing massive amounts of overtime for your officers to work, just to cover minimum staffing levels. Let me put some perspective on the situation. At a previous hiring process, we had 29 people show up. We hired several of them, but even two of those have now quit and left. At this most recent hiring process, we had just 16 people show up, 16, for 20 open positions. We could have hired all of them that day and still been short of our budget 105 goal. Of the 16, then, only nine passed the physical test to move to the written test, with only five passing the written test to move on in our process. In stark contrast to our numbers, this past weekend, the Carmel Police Department held a hiring process and had 178 people show up. They have five open positions. 178. I'll let you in on a little secret here, too. Four of those 178 are current BPD officers looking to leave. Vice President Rogers is also going to provide some more detail on that. Next, an update on the Showers West Building Project you previously approved this year. The FOP team has been included in a few more of the meetings with the architect team, and a first design meeting was held where individual employees were invited to attend and offer suggestions. That was appreciated. We've also met with Mayor Hamilton recently, where he dropped a new bit of information about the Tech Park parking garage, where BPD will have to use spaces to accommodate our large number of daily parking needs. Were any of you aware that the city has been working to not only start the Tech Park project this year just north of 10th Street, but also wants to build a hotel there as well? Not just a hotel, but a hotel with no parking, where at the expectation that they'll use the Tech Park parking garage, as well as BPD, as well as the Tech Park people and anyone else wanting to use that area. We certainly did not know this, or you would have heard us bring it up rather loudly in the previous discussions. What we're seeing now is a rather aggressive rush to do something to that building before the end of the year, rather than a well-constructed, well-thought-out plan to make the best we can of that space. Councilmembers, we have brought up suggestions to the mayor about things that could be done right now to better position ourselves to attract and hire already certified officers from around our area, but so far, he has not acted on them. Simple, non-contractual equipment changes that we have the ability to do right now that would put us in line with our peers. We have to do something to bring in lateral hires, but also retain the current staff that we have. Incentives are great, but they have to be properly directed to the right groups and actually make a difference. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to email our comments to each of you as well to make sure you don't miss any of the numbers we're giving you tonight. Please let me know if you have any questions, and thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Post.
Mr. Lucas, anyone on Zoom? Okay. Welcome, if you would, please sign in. And when you're ready, share your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jeff Rogers, and I'm one of the union representatives of the Bloomington Police Department. In picking up where President Post left off regarding our current staffing numbers, so far this year, BPD has already lost six officers, with one just this past Sunday. The next one we know of leaves June 23rd for the Fishers Police Department, and yet another is scheduled to leave by August 1st. This will put us at 83 officers. This is the staffing level from the 1980s and early 90s. Just think, if Carmel does decide to hire all four of those officers at once, where would that leave us? Due to this lack of manpower, officers have had to pick up the slack in order to maintain the level of service this city expects from its police department. In terms of overtime, last year, BPD spent over $702,000. By the first week of June now, we've already spent over $603,000 for 2023. This is current sworn officers working 11,166 hours extra duty in the first half of the year. That's just dollars. There were also another 1,292 hours of comp time earned in that time period. This is time not spent with our families, not getting enough sleep. Officers are tired. About every six months, we also hear about another court decision that furthers the efforts of annexation. The city's own fiscal plan regarding annexation states that BPD will need an additional 24 to 31 officers in order to provide effective services for the annexed area. At this rate, it's going to take us at least 10 years to get back to the 105 officers that we're currently budgeted at, much less start to add the new needed staffing for annexation. Something must be done now to assist in recruiting of lateral officers and retention of existing officers. On March 12th, 2021, the housing incentive was announced by the mayor's office to incentivize living inside city limits. BPD had 92 officers on that date. Two years, three months later, we now have 85. We applaud the city for trying something new. It can be an incentive to new hires and younger officers, but unfortunately, the incentive does not appear to be making any great difference. We now have to incentivize retention of our veteran officers and recruitment of lateral officers, those that have already, that already have families and may have already put down roots in surrounding counties. These officers look at benefits just like every other person does before they think about applying for a salary position. One of the major benefits the police officers expect to see is a take-home vehicle for our officers. This is a professional standard in law enforcement and is provided by almost every other municipality in our state. Currently, BPD has the vehicles and infrastructure to provide take-home vehicles to all officers tomorrow. The only reason this has not been done is because the mayor has stated he doesn't want to see BPD vehicles to be parked in surrounding counties. Unfortunately, not everyone wants to or can afford to live inside the city limits. Full implementation of the take-home car program will help retention of current officers who live outside the city, improve recruitment of sworn officers from surrounding cities, and also, while we hope it is never needed, would allow for a more rapid response to a major incident. Thank you.
Are there any additional commenters here in chambers or on Zoom, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, I do have a written comment from Sam Dove, who says, he shared a tweet from Greg Alexander, which reads, "Sometimes I feel like if I don't micromanage the whole world, then they'll just build a whole effin' library branch and forget to install a single pedestrian connection to the sidewalk that runs along the property line and connects directly to the B-line a quarter mile away." And I see no additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Dove, for that comment. That'll conclude this period of public comment. We'll have a second period of public comment later on this evening. That brings us to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any from interview team A? Interview team B? Or interview team C? Interview team C, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, we are bringing forward a recommendation from the mayor to appoint Ernesto Castañeda to a voting position on the Historic Preservation Commission. The HPC, all the voting positions are filled through the mayor's office. Mr. Castañeda has been a non-voting member appointed by the city council for several years, and now there's a voting member vacancy, and the mayor's office would like to appoint him to that seat. And so we're bringing that forward for approval.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Sir.
It's been moved and seconded. All those, yes.
Happy to approve it formally, I guess, but is, just wondering, is that strictly necessary?
Yes.
It is, for approving a mayoral appointment?
In this case, for the HPC only.
Okay, thank you.
This just in. So all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes. And thank you to that individual for service. That takes us to legislation for first readings and resolutions.
Madam Chair, I move that Resolution 2308 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Sir.
All those in favor of the motion to introduce indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2308 authorizing the allocations of the Jack Hopkins Social Services Program funds for the year 2023 and related matters. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution brings forward the recommendations of the 2023 Jack Hopkins Social Services Committee. The principal task of the committee is to recommend funding for local social services agency proposals that best meet program criteria and best meet the needs of the community. This resolution allocates a total of $323,000 to 32 different agency programs. The resolution also approves the funding agreements with these agencies, accepts the report of the committee, and authorizes the chair of the committee to resolve any questions regarding the interpretation of the agreements.
Madam Chair, I move that Resolution 2308 be adopted.
Sir. Thank you. Mr. Lucas, I believe you're presenting on this item?
Yes, I would be happy to give a brief report, and Councilmember Sandberg is also here. She served as chair of this year's Jack Hopkins Committee, so I'm sure between the two of us, we can answer questions. Just a little background about the program. This is the 31st year for the Jack Hopkins Social Services Program. It wasn't originally named that. It wasn't originally named that, but at some point, it was named after Councilmember Jack Hopkins, who was instrumental in creating the program. Since its inception in 1993, the city has provided over $5.8 million to social service agencies for various projects and programs that have an impact on the community. The committee prioritizes projects and programs that address food, shelter, and healthcare needs of city residents who are of low to moderate income, under 18 years old, elderly or affected with a disability or are otherwise disadvantaged. Each year, the requests for funding exceeds the amount of funds budgeted and available. This year is no different. The 2023 committee had $323,000 in funds to allocate. The committee received 48 applications. That's up from 32 last year. The total request in dollars this year was 964,877 and some change. Last year, the total amount requested was $557,000. The resolution before you tonight makes a recommendation for that $323,000 budgeted for this year to 32 agency programs. This year's committee included Councilmember Sandberg, Kate Rosenbarger, Ron Smith, Jim Sims, and included three members of the public with experience in social services. Those members are Tim Mayer, Mark Fraley, and Jamie Scholl. And I will just say thank you now to all of those members who served and worked through this program. The committee met six times over the course of four months. They heard presentations from 35 of the 48 agencies, who were all able to attend and present. Also want to thank hand staff, who were present at the committee meetings and provided assistance throughout the process, and to oversee the administration of the grants in the claim process once the council approves allocations. So Resolution 2308, which is in front of you tonight, allocates the $323,000 that was budgeted this year to 32 agencies. I will not read the list of agencies unless a member requests that. It is listed in the resolution by agency, amount of the grant, and the purpose of the funds. This resolution also approves funding agreements between the agencies and the city. It delegates the job of interpreting those funding agreements or any questions that arise from those to the chair of the committee, so Councilmember Sandberg. And it approves the report of the Jack Hopkins Committee, which was included in your packet tonight. That is all I've got. I'm happy to go into anything I covered in more detail, or Councilmember Sandberg, I'm sure, would be happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Sandberg, if you can add?
Just very quickly, I do want to thank the committee. It's always an arduous task to review the applications and to interpret the criteria, and the team did an excellent job. And so we are very comfortable with the recommendations we have put forward, and also we're very comfortable in some of the recommendations we've made from the debriefing meeting, which may signal a return to some of the original intent of Jack Hopkins in order to stress food, shelter, and healthcare for low-income individuals as the key priorities, possibly with respect to having operational funds be less valued as one-time-only asks, and then having operational funds be under a bridge fund basis. Those are recommendations that came as a result of the large numbers of applications that we saw this year and the amount that we needed to eliminate because they weren't quite in line with the intent of the funding program.
Thank you. Are there questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, there were a couple of organizations that I was unfamiliar with, that were, seemed to be new this year. One of them is the Healing Hands Outreach Center, and I looked it up, and it is a center affiliated with the City Church for All Nations. And so I just want to make sure that there are no religious tests to receive help from that center.
I don't believe so. All of the agencies that apply are informed that any services or programs they provide have to be separate from any religious components of their organization. I believe we reviewed all applications, and there were some concerns with other agencies that were noted, but I don't believe, I believe that program is separate.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions? Okay. Let's go to the public for this, for public comment. May I have a show of hands here in chambers of how many would like to offer comment? One here in chambers. Mr. Lucas, could you extend, could you go ahead and approach the podium, please? And Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom?
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to speak on Resolution 2308, please let us know by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak. And I do see one hand raised at the moment.
Thank you. And let's begin here in chambers. If you would, please share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Carol Canfield. I'm a lifelong resident of Bloomington. I sat through the last two meetings of the Jack Hopkins Social Services Fund Committee, in which presentations from each organization were being considered for funding and the subsequent initial allocations designated. First, let me state that I do appreciate all of the sifting through such a myriad of needs and worthy organizations that you have done, and thank you for the many hours you've spent in doing so. Councilmember Sandberg mentioned at the end of the meeting in May 11th that you should expect pushback on the allocations designated for Planned Parenthood and All Options. Not wanting to disappoint anybody, allow me to provide that pushback. I have spoken before council for years during the meetings for common councils vote on the Hopkins Fund, and will continue to do so as the need arises. It arose at the May 11th meeting. I was chagrined to see halfway through the meeting a suggestion made to change the proposed allotments to Planned Parenthood and All Options and increase them to, back to their complete requests because of a deep sense of priority for those two groups. Allow me to state my objections. Both of these two groups are controversial and always will be, as long as they continue to provide abortions or refer them, regardless of the stated reason for the money requests. When so many other organizations need the money and do not connect themselves to easily the most controversial topic in our country, why must we cause such a divide among the taxpayers of this city? You have roughly $1 million in requests overall, and for so many wonderful projects and organizations, and only $300,000 to distribute. Human beings are the only creatures on earth that are made in the image of God. Animals are not, plants are not, only humans are. We are to value, protect, and care for them as such. Abortions destroy those made in the image of God. And if there's any question about whether it's a human life or not, what else could it be? A squirrel? A tadpole? Two humans produced it, so it can only be a human life. Remember Dr. Seuss's quote, "A person's a person, no matter how small." And if we cease to value that, we are no better than the Nazis who considered Jews some huben, or Margaret Sanger, the founder of Planned Parenthood, who stated, quote, "We do not want word to go out that we want to destroy the Negro race," end quote. Life is precious. We need to treat it as such. Be advised, God will not be mocked, especially concerning those made in his image. Is Bloomington equitable and inclusive only to those who can speak for themselves? Why don't the unborn count? Let me speak specifically to Planned Parenthood. Are you aware, Deborah Nuketola, the head medical director of Planned Parenthood Federation of America, has been flown in many, many times from Hawaii?
Ms. Canfield, you are at your time. Could you please finish just one more sentence and then finish up?
People are valuable, no matter how young, born or unborn. We don't need to give money to organizations that don't value that.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, we have a commenter on Zoom?
Yes, first on Zoom is Scott Tibbs.
Mr. Tibbs, welcome. If you would confirm your name for the record, please, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Scott Tibbs. I am a resident of the first Bloomington, the first city council district, and I am rising again to oppose funding for Planned Parenthood and All Options. As you know in the letter I sent you, All Options has a significant budget surplus, and Planned Parenthood is part of a huge multinational corporation with over $1 billion in overall organizational revenue. Neither organization needs the money that you're about to give them. So I would encourage you to take this funding off the table and give the money to truly local charities that actually need it. We should stop subsidizing operational funds, as the counselor earlier said, and I agree with that. Planned Parenthood and All Options come to you every year for operational funding, which is not what the Hopkins Fund was for, and, but you give it to them year after year anyway. So, in closing, again, please do not fund Planned Parenthood, which kills babies, or All Options, which pays for the killing of babies. And please be pro-choice and do not force us to fund your political agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tibbs. Is there, are there any additional commenters here in chambers? Please, if you would, approach the podium. And Mr. Lucas, just to help me keep track, is there anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, one additional commenter on Zoom at the moment.
We'll do that, we'll do chambers first and then Zoom, so. Welcome. If you would, please state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Sydney Zollick. I don't need three minutes. I just want to take the time to thank you guys for continuing to support women's rights. I know there were some comments comparing abortion clinics to Nazis. Frankly, as a Jewish woman, I just, for the record, the Jewish faith, most sects of Judaism believes that life starts at birth. So it's very, very insulting to see people compare abortion clinics to Nazis. And once again, thank you for continuing to support women's rights in light of the controversy, especially because Bloomington Planned Parenthood is one of the only clinics in Indiana that still provides women abortions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And Mr. Lucas on Zoom?
Next on Zoom, we have Janani Eswaran.
I didn't catch the pronunciation of that, but I'll invite them to confirm their name for the record, please, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hi, sorry. My name is Janani Eswaran.
Thank you, and then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Again, I don't necessarily need three minutes, but I just want to echo the sentiments made by the last speaker that comparing Jewish people to fetuses and comparing abortion clinics to literal Nazis that have murdered human beings is deeply offensive. I also want to echo that I find it ironic that the speaker, that one of the speakers made a reference to fetuses being made in the image of God, and stated, and stated that there are religious justifications behind having this chamber, having the Social Services Fund stop funding Planned Parenthood. And I would like to remind everybody that there's a separation between church and state, and bringing in such religious references to take away women's rights is completely unwarranted. So I just want to thank everybody again for protecting women's rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have additional commenters here in chambers? Seeing none or on Zoom? Okay, in which case, let's come back to council for questions or comments. Comments, then? Councilmember Sandberg?
Once again, I will state for the record, and this may be my last opportunity to do so, as someone who has been a longstanding active member with Jack Hopkins and its intent to assist low-income residents of this community. With respect to what is happening in the world and in the country with regard to women's rights, this committee felt that it's especially important to fund the efforts of All Options and Planned Parenthood based on the projects that they brought forward, which in one case was in support of families who are struggling to provide for their children, and then in the other case, long-term active birth control methods to prevent the need for an abortion, which no one sees as a positive outcome for any woman who is faced with those difficult decisions. I respect Ms. Canfield. She and I share many things in common, both politically, and we share a love of music. But on this particular issue, I know we will continue to agree to disagree with respect to a woman's right to make the choices she and her family and her doctor need to make about their reproductive futures. But that being said, Jack Hopkins does not, nor can it, in any way, shape, or form, support any funding for abortions that do occur through the Planned Parenthood clinic. What we funded were mechanisms for low-income women to protect themselves from any unwarranted or unwanted pregnancy, and this we see as a common good. We see this as an essential part of the Jack Hopkins intent, which is to support people, food, shelter, healthcare, our most needy residents. I stand by that commitment from the Jack Hopkins Committee. I will continue to support a woman's right to have her own say about her body and what happens to her life and the life of her children and the life of her family. As someone who has worked in child protective services, I see a really serious need for us to focus on the early end of families, keeping them intact, keeping them whole with regard to their economic security. So I make no apologies for the decision of this committee. It is done with good intentions, and it is done in the spirit of what we intend to do and help our most needy. With regard to the statement about they don't need the money because they have huge budgets, the Jack Hopkins Social Service Committee is not meant to completely fund a nonprofit organization. We expect them to come to us with solid financial ability to support themselves and their missions by their own fundraising efforts. Jack Hopkins is merely meant to assist the efforts of all of our nonprofits in this community to do the important job of caring for those who have the least ability to care for themselves. It has been a pleasure to serve on the Jack Hopkins Committee for all these years, and this having been my last, I say thank you to all who support us and these efforts.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you, and I really appreciate the public comments this evening. Being a member of this committee for several years, and I was also on the Sophia Travis Community Grant for the county, oh, I'm sorry, Committee for the County. And it always, not always, but one of the things, the talk of abortive services, and I understand that that's controversial, I understand that it's divisive, but that's not what this is about. You know, not only would I not, but I don't think we legally can use public funds in order to, for those services. What I do think is important, and you've heard the term equity, and you'll hear it a lot, and you know, determine what you think about all those things. But what we provide is, in my mind, true equity services. There are many people that need and require these services: education, mammograms, pap smears, contraceptives, family planning, diapers for children, potty training. Did anything that I just say is non-supportive of equity and human development. And one of the things I've also thought was very, very important, in particularly with Planned Parenthood and those educational services, that if you talk about family planning, you talk about abort, I'm sorry, about contraceptives, you provide medical care, then there's a pretty good chance that you're not going to have unwanted pregnancies, which is not going to lead to what some of our public people have commented about. And that's fair, I mean, I'm okay with that. But I'd rather hit it on this, I'm sorry, I'd rather take care of it on this end, as opposed to deal with it on that end, if that makes sense. So I'm happy to have been on this committee. I'm like Councilmember Sandberg, I probably won't be here for future, at least not in the next couple. the next couple. But one of the things that I've been on record for in a couple of our public meetings is I've advocated for minimally a doubling of the Jack Hopkins funds, you know, during our budget process. What we have available is just simply not enough. I'm not advocated to go all the way to the 900,000-plus that was really requested, because you got to you got to work through this and divide it and make sure that it's worthy of tax dollars. But I think to start the conversation and say we want to double the funds, whether I'm supported or not, whether this council, you know, supports it, and whether the administration supports it or not, again, I've been involved with that. I see the need in our community, and if we're serious about equity, there are many different forms of equity. Bloomington is a town of have and have-nots, and I think the sooner that we understand that and what we can do to help those that need, the better. So that's my comments, and I'm happy to support these allocations. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 23-08? Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
That passes eight-zero. Thank you. Thank you to members of the committee for your service. And that takes us to Ordnance 2312.
Madam Chair, I move that to Ordnance 2312, be read by the clerk, by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to introduce, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordnance 2312 in ordinance to amend Ordnance 2226, previously amended by Ordnance 2240, which fixes salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2023, regarding to reflect updates needing implementation in 2023. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Ordnance 2240, which set the maximum 2023 salary for all appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the city of Bloomington, Indiana. The amendment reflects changes to job titles, a change to a job grade, and additional FTEs.
Madam Chair, I move that Ordnance 2312 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And who do we have from staff here? Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Emily Fields. I'm the interim HR Director for the city of Bloomington. I have for your approval Ordnance 2312, which amends Ordnance 2226, which set the 2023 pay grades and salary ranges for appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees. We have several changes in this amendment for your approval. First, in engineering, we're requesting a third project manager, adding a new staff member instead of using consultants to do additional work, and it which will assist in overseeing the construction of city-led capital projects will save the city money, and we think this is a smart decision to add this FTE. Second, FIRE seeks to add three community paramedics or community EMTs. Additional FTEs will partially restore some of the services lost by moving sworn staff around to deal with some staffing shortages that they're experiencing. Third, we're changing some titles in our legal department. We would like two position titles to change due to some shifting responsibilities related to the human rights duties. The Human Rights Director slash Attorney will become the Assistant City Attorney, and the Human Rights Administrative Assistant will become the Administrative Assistant. These are title changes only. Next, the Program Specialist in the Environmental Division of Utilities was regraded, and the grade increased to a grade seven. And we'd also like to change the title to Hazardous Materials Coordinator to better reflect the duties of that position. This position regularly inspects and provides guidance on hazardous materials, compliance, along with waste regulation and pollution prevention. Finally, there was text changed in the section in the second to the last paragraph of Section 2i. The collective bargaining agreement between AFSMI and the city outlines a process for AFSMI to propose pay for additional certifications, not only at 25 cents per hour, which the previous text indicated, but at higher amounts. And in accordance with this, the city would like to approve a request to pay the master motor equipment operator in the Dillman Plant at Utilities a land for landfill/solid certification at 50 cents an hour. So I appreciate your consideration of these changes, and I'll take any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Are there questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Mr. Lucas, can we get that memo projected over there too, if possible, or if not? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Fields. My question is about the three community paramedics, community EMTs in the FIRE Department, because I note the fiscal impact is approximately $243,432. Is there already money in the BFD budget for that, or how is that going to be covered?
Yes, and Chief Moore can can talk more about that.
Good evening, council. Jason Moore, FIRE Chief. To answer your question directly, yes. We have had several cost savings from being understaffed by 21 positions. We also have an awareness of encumbered funds that we may be able to release should that become an issue with the overtime that we are paying for the current vacancies. And we also did receive reversion funds back from the mayor's office that are addressing some of our other shortages. So to answer very plainly, yes, there is funds to support this for the 2023 year in our current budget.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. This is probably for Chief Moore as well. I'm sorry, actually, the first presenter. Well, she said earlier, and I apologize, but she said earlier about in the description that these positions could be used for making up shortages within a department. Can you expound on that and talk to us about that a little bit?
Absolutely. I have had several private conversations with some council members, but I want to be perfectly clear on the record. When the union brought up concerns about us having to shut down our squad, which is a two-unit or two-person response vehicle that we created in 2017, we knew when we started our mobile integrated healthcare program with the community EMTs or paramedics, that there are some medical calls that firefighters don't need to be on. There is a shortage of ambulances in our county, and we are constantly going on calls for lift assists. We are going on calls for non-critical medical emergencies when there are no available ambulances. So by these additional staff members coming on board, we can fast-forward the evolution of our mobile integrated healthcare program and partially restore some of those medical things that the squad is doing today. I would also point out that these are things that our union has actively and made publicly known that aren't necessarily sworn duties. Helping someone up, you know, anyone can do that. They did not require firefighter that takes six months of training minimum and all the additional resources that they have. So when we say they can help, there are some calls that this program can evolve to take, but they cannot start taking just all the 911 calls that these sworn members currently take.
Okay, thank you. You indicated that a lot of those calls are for help calls. I'm assuming they come from dispatch. And then you said it's because we're shortage of ambulances. So does dispatch contact ambulance services for those responses, and then they say, we don't have enough, we can't do it, and then it now reverts to BFD?
So.
Is that how that works?
So the evolution of how this has occurred, we were made aware of several very serious calls that our crews went on, that an ambulance was not available, which is why we, as a department, agreed to pick up the lift assist, knowing that we are going to be bringing these civilian mobile integrated healthcare people online. So it was a temporary to use sworn firefighters to do that job with the idea of moving those responsibilities to a more appropriate service. When it comes down to others' shortages within the county, if the computer-aided dispatch system looks for a resource that is not available, it goes to the next most reasonable resource, which is where if certain calls are coming out and there is not an available ambulance, that we are now dispatched as a medical resource within the county or within the city to handle those. It is happening more and more often. These are things that we're in discussion with, with IU Health Lifeline, but we, as a department, are picking up some of the slack for our lack of available ambulances in the county.
Okay. Madam Chair, I have one final question, if I may. Chief Moore, in the past, we were talking about these positions, and I am supportive. I mean, so, but I think we need to ask some questions, but, and I think Councilmember Piedmont Smith hit it right on the head about the fiscal impact, and I'm glad to hear that there's money there, because the discussion in the past, if I was, as I recall, was that there was a possibility that the people that we serve, some of these calls, then we would interact with their insurance companies to pay for some sort of a cost when when they're already paying taxes for services anyway. You see my confusion there? Okay.
And what you're referring to is is part of our budgetary goals, to analyze whether or not we could potentially move to a model that would use insurance funds to help make this more sustainable. So to put you at ease, there is no legal mechanism within the state to do that yet. But the other thing is, currently, when we go on medical calls, we pass those costs through, the insurance companies, through the ambulance and the hospital. We use medical supplies. We recoup them back from the hospital or from the ambulance. These programs, we don't have that interaction. There's not a handoff to go to the hospital. So some of the consumables, other things like that, insurance companies would reimburse this department for, rather than taxpayers just constantly putting the money out. To say that taxpayers are funding this, it is correct, and we are serving the most underserved members of our community, and it is making a huge impact and saving lives already. So while it is constantly under advisement whether or not to make it more sustainable, we are at a zero place to be able to even do that, because it is not allowable under state law as it is written today.
Okay, thank you. It's good to know, but that wasn't mentioned months ago when we talked about it in the first place. So thank you.
And if I may, this is part of the analysis of whether or not we could or not. We did not know that months ago, and we do know now what we know. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none, let's go to the public for comment. If I may, have a show of hands here in chambers of who would like to comment? I'll take that as one. Okay. And Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom?
Yes, if there are members of the public on Zoom that want to speak to Ordnance 2312, please let us know by using the raise hand feature or by sending the meeting host a chat.
And here in chambers, if you would, please state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Jordan Canada, Union President, City Fire. So I found out about this less than a week ago, June 4th, 5th, and there's a lot of confusion about it, as you heard Emily say, that they will be rearranging sworn officers and what their responsibilities are, which will possibly result in a violation of our contract that we negotiated with the city. So a lot of communication from both administrations on this has been rushed and just poorly handled in general. So we need time to push these, push this back, talk about it, find out what the goal is and the game plan and how to execute. The other issue is the money of it that you had brought up, $243,000, $118 for an ops chief, and then over, there's another $100,000 for the new recruits. That's over $461,000. And this administration can find money for other positions but cannot find it for the firefighters that have been loyal to this community through the pandemic, who have worked way over 150 hours. We recently had a firefighter, with this mess, we had a firefighter turn in their notice that they will be leaving come August due to their officer responsibilities being stripped. This is something that we need to pause and push, and I request that we talk about this later after your guys' recess. Thank you.
Mr. Canada, are there, do we have commenters on Zoom? Mr. Lucas?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, thank you. Is there, are there additional comments here in chambers? Okay. Seeing none, let's come back to coun, let's, excuse me, let's come back to council for additional questions or comments. Councilmember Sandberg, sorry.
What I've just heard is a little bit troubling. Is there a possibility for us to remove the firefighters issue from this entire ordinance, which is kind of omnibus? Because most of it is certainly approvable, but I'm not sure I'm ready to vote on that. Is it a way to separate the question?
Okay.
Councilmember Sandberg, are you being? Removing the three EMT positions from this ordinance?
This whole discussion about the civi, you know, civilian team and the concerns that the union has brought forward and lack of ambulances through IU Health, which seems to be driving this, I mean, I've just heard several troubling comments just now that make me think we need more time to evaluate what's being brought forward with regard to the firefighters. If that's not possible, that's fine. I'll cast a no vote for the whole thing, but I'd prefer to have it separated out.
It is certainly possible to amend the ordinance. So if you mean separate it out by removing the three proposed EMT positions, that's within the council's control.
Go ahead. Finish, Mr. Lucas, and then, Councilmember Volin.
Beyond that, I'm not sure how you mean divide the question, but if you would like to strike those three EMT positions, that's that's a possible amendment. Certainly, the council could postpone the entire ordinance to a later date.
I mean, the rank and file has asked for more time on this particular aspect of this of this ordinance.
Councilmember Volin?
Right. To the point of Councilmember Sandberg's point, I think what she's asking for is the possibility of dividing the question so that we can postpone one portion and then vote on the other. Is that feasible with an ordinance like this? I'm not sure I see the difference between striking the positions that are raising concerns and dividing the question. Well, if I'm guessing correctly, we don't necessarily want to have to create a whole new ordinance. We just want to, well, I guess I take it back. If we divide the question, it's still one question under one ordinance number. I mean, we want to postpone that portion. We would need to create a new part to house the parts that you're taking out, and I suppose I see that as similar to just taking those out now and. So then you're simply saying we should move to strike the appropriate sections. The reason I ask this is because the next ordinance is related to this. And so, you know, it seems to be tangled up in a way that, I mean, I guess what I don't understand is if we were to strike those three positions from this ordinance, how much more trouble would it be to bring those back for voting? The administration could propose an additional ordinance with those positions at any time.
I think this answers my question, that there's nothing that can be done other than to cast my vote of conscience, because I've heard some things tonight that trouble me greatly.
Do we want to have Ms. Fields and Chief Moore respond to this question? Would that potentially be helpful at this point? I mean, Ms. Fields, would you like to respond to Mr. Canada's comments or to the discussion Or Chief Moore?
Yes. So I would like to respond to a few of the comments. First and foremost, I think maybe the council are aware that I have been out dealing with a personal medical issue. So when he says that he learned about this about a week ago, that is very close to my return date of me trying to get ahead and figure out things that were decided while I was out. When it comes down to the concerns of the union and bringing up possible violations of contract, I want to address that very plainly of what what portion of the contract they're discussing, and it is Article 17 of our collective bargaining agreement under layoffs. And it says, quote, civilian. under layoffs. And it says, quote, "Civilian personnel will not be hired as the result of a layoff to perform duties previously performed by a firefighter." The administration is not laying off any firefighters. We are proposing additional staff to help with a 100% increase in call volume during my time as Fire Chief. We are proposing an increase in staff to deal with the impact of a lack of healthcare in our community. We are proposing an increase to help take some of the burden off of the firefighters who are overworked and brought up a very valid concern of a resource that we created in 2017 that is our most successful program. There is no intention of this administration or me as the Fire Chief to remove the squad, to remove that program, which has proven to be beneficial. It provides a safety accountability officer on every fire scene, which has been proven to help reduce line of duty death incidents. It has been providing a medical service to lead the larger trucks in service so that they are more capable of being responding for calls. And as we are staffed right now, it is the one resource that we have sacrificed to be able to alleviate some of the overtime concerns of our overworked staff. This is a temporary issue. I will tell the council that some of the things that we learned during the pandemic, when you're dealing with a crisis, don't just respond to the crisis, set yourself up for success in the future. This, along with the additional sworn member, is not going to replace any sworn member today. It will allow us to deal with the current crisis, and when this crisis is over, we will be in a much better position to provide better services, and we will also be in a position to have additional capacity for a younger workforce. So with all that being said, the concerns that they have were valid. I had some of the very similar concerns of trying to exchange civilians for sworn members. I've been assured by Mayor Hamilton that this is still my department to run, and that I am allowed to make this program happen in a way that makes sense for everyone, that is due, thought out, and that by adding these positions, we will have a new tool in the toolbox to address some of our concerns of our community and potentially still help our firefighters until we receive full staffing again. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Moore. Additional questions, or do we need to finish this conversation?
I'm sorry, yeah. I'm looking at the ordinance, and I, I'm having trouble identifying. It's not a, it's not a simple matter of Section 1, Section 2. It's lists. It's not easy for me to, to pick out what parts would need to be suspended for further consideration.
Yeah, I think we just got the answer. Mayor Hamilton says that this can be done, so this will be done.
Additional, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I'd just like to note that we have two separate ordinances here, and I've spoken with both Mr. Sergeant Canada and with Chief Moore, and the concerns from the union seem to really be more about ordinance 2313 and less about 2312. So I just want to caution my colleagues to not mix the two together. Please look carefully at each one, and maybe only one of them is cause for concern. I am personally not concerned about either one, but...
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Similar thoughts to Councilmember Piedmont Smith, in that I also spoke with Chief Moore and also several representatives from the fire union who are with us this evening, and the concerns I heard voiced had mainly to do with the Assistant Chief of Operations. And I had a productive conversation with Chief Moore about that, and I think we'll have a productive conversation about that in the context of the next ordinance. My view generally is that these positions are also needed, and it's a bit of a both and. I don't think we are seeing less commitment or less investment in sworn firefighters as a result of supporting this additional need. So I'm comfortable supporting the ordinance in full tonight, I guess, is my point, this particular ordinance, but I look forward to the conversation with the next ordinance about one of the new sworn positions and what it means for existing programs. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims? Oh, Councilmember Volan?
I want to suggest that, and I'm not making a motion yet, but I want to suggest that we postpone this to right after the next ordinance so that we can get a full picture of what's being discussed. I think there's going to be a deeper conversation, and so if we can just postpone this for a few minutes until we deal with the next one, I think that that might give us all a little less heartburn. But I'm curious what my colleagues think. I haven't made a motion yet. I'm hoping to get some comment from my colleagues.
Additional comment from council members? Councilmember Sims?
I wanted to comment, I just, Steve had his hands up. I'm sorry. Councilmember Volan had his hands up a lot longer than I did, so that was all. I think part of the discussion now is because in the presentation, it was mentioned about these community paramedic EMT positions. So if it's better served for the next ordinance, then that should have been part of the discussion for the next ordinance. But when it was talked about in this ordinance, you understand why there was comments there. But my other comment is, I'm not so sure that the council's purview is to really get into union conflicts and violations. I'm not so sure that's what we really want to get into, at least me personally. Not supporting or rejecting either. I'm just saying, I'm just not so sure that's our purview. What I heard is potential violations, and then I heard no violations. So I'm not, that's a rabbit hole I'm not so sure we as a council should go down, but that's my comments, and I'd like to hear more about Councilmember Volan's suggestion.
Additional comments? Councilmember Volan?
We postpone ordinance 2312 until immediately after ordinance 2313.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Sims?
What do we, explain what we just did, what that'll do.
This is after we discuss the next ordinance, which is related. That's, that's my proposal.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. Let's move to ordinance 2313.
Madam Chair, I move that ordinance 2313 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to introduce, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read ordinance 2313?
Ordinance 2313, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2225, which fixes salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the city of Bloomington, Indiana, for the year 2023, regarding to reflect increases in compensation to certain firefighters. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends and replaces ordinance 2225, which set the minimum and maximum salary rates for all sworn fire and police personnel for the year 2023 in accordance with council-approved collective bargaining agreements, by adding an Assistant Chief of Operations position and amending one other job title within the fire department, and by adding sections IF retention pay, IG Kelly Day vacation buyback, and IH premium payments for battalion chiefs to the ordinance.
I move that ordinance 2313 be adopted.
Thank you. And do we have Ms. Fields or Chief Moore speaking to this? Ms. Fields, welcome back.
Thank you. Again, my name's Emily Fields, interim HR Director for the city. Ordinance 2313 requests multiple changes to the public safety salary ordinance, ordinance 22-25. First, this ordinance seeks to add an Assistant Chief of Operations in the fire department. This position will assess safety risks to the firefighters during structural fires in addition to administering the department's health and safety program, which includes tasks related to firefighter injuries, OSHA requirements, and firefighters who return to work from medical leave. This ordinance includes several strategies to address the effects of staffing shortages that the fire department is experiencing. Section IF will allow the city to compensate eligible firefighters with an hourly premium for up to 150 hours' work during the COVID pandemic. The max amount will equal to 3% of the 22, 2022 base pay for their classification. Section IG will allow the city to buy back Kelly days at the end of the year. Kelly days are scheduled days off built into a firefighter's regular work rotation. Because of staffing shortages, fire has been calling out others to fill in for those taking their Kelly days. So with this provision, firefighters may choose to work their previously scheduled Kelly days. They'll get paid for that work, and then they'll get $500 for that Kelly day or for however many Kelly days at the end of the year. Section IH is a provision to compensate fires three battalion chiefs with $100 when they work non-scheduled shifts in addition to their normal pay or compensatory time that they may earn. And I have a question about, there was an amendment. Do I speak about that, or? Not yet? Okay.
Did you have more?
No.
Chief Moore, did you want?
I'm happy to let him down.
Chief Moore, did you want to comment as well?
Good evening, Jason Moore, Fire Chief. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak on this. I think, again, some of the union's concerns over this, that this was a idea that was brought about when I was out. I got ahead of this now, and I have reassured them that this is not going to permanently remove any sworn duties. Currently, when the squad is shut down, and I've told you how important it is over the years for firefighter safety, I am accepting an on-call with no additional compensation to be able to ensure that should there be a fire in this city, that a officer will be there to help ensure that there is that safety officer role filled. This is a senior staff member that can help me while we're under this crisis, and when fully staffed, I have a long queue of issues as far as operational standard operating guidelines that have been in draft form for, prior to the pandemic. I have issues with younger firefighters, less experienced firefighters, that the additional oversight, even upon the restoration of full staffing where the squad is fully staffed and filling those primary roles, that we could establish a senior advisor type program where a more senior fire officer, myself included, will be able to go out to these scenes and provide additional oversight and additional safety perspectives on these scenes that historically can kill firefighters. So I am asking for this because I've been asking for it for nearly six years now. This is a crisis, and this is an opportunity to move forward past the crisis with a new capacity to handle the changing in our workforce, which does include, as of this moment, 21 new firefighters that will be coming onboard before the end of the year. That is approximately 20% of our workforce that is brand new, with new officers and the outpouring of experience that we're going to have to deal with requires greater oversight. So I am asking that we do this. I am also going to say that it will not ever permanently remove the squad. It is our most successful program, and that while the additional oversight, I don't know that any firefighter should ever be upset about having additional eyes maintaining their safety on any scene. So I am asking that we do support this, and I am here telling you today that I do not plan on removing the squad and having this position fill that role. We cannot be on-call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It is much better suited for a firefighter that was already on duty to fill these roles with us being able to provide additional advisement and everything else after we get past this staffing crisis. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, then Councilmember Volan.
I'm trying to understand the Kelly days. So the proposal is, so, so currently firefighters have a certain number of days off called Kelly days. And so the proposal is that they can choose to work those days and be paid for it and also be paid a premium, or what's the...
So, if I may try to clarify this. The Kelly day system that we're under was decided in the 2017 contract, and what that does is it allowed for a greater number of days off for our firefighters, but it also provided some relief from the built-in overtime that is just accrued by a firefighter working their normal schedule. So a Kelly day is essentially a forced paid day off every 42 days. So they select their, their cycles. They get to have a choice in what day they want based on seniority, and then they have to take that day off. What they have volunteered to do to get us through this crisis is to give up that voluntary day off. They just want to be compensated for it at the end of the year, which is the buyback program. When they are off on a Kelly day, we are, we are not like most departments where someone takes off and we just wish them well. We have to backfill that position. So if a firefighter takes off for a Kelly day, a day that they may or may not have wanted off, then we also backfill that with someone that's making time and a half to fill that position. So we have firefighters that are willing to give up that mandatory day off so that they can help alleviate the overtime issues, and they just want to be compensated at the end of the year for the ones that they do give up, because it is a paid day off. Does that clarify, or does that complicate?
So the compensation is their regular pay plus they get paid again?
They, they should have been off and been paid their regular pay for not being there. So by them being there, we're essentially balancing the books at the end of the year. These, these are essentially considered paid time off days, just like we accrue annual leave. They, they have eight Kelly days if they're here for an entire calendar year that is paid time off. When a firefighter leaves and they have a remaining balance, they are paid out for that. This is time owed to them. They are volunteering to give it up. They just want to receive compensation for the time that they have given back to the city.
Okay. So my concern with that is them being overworked. So I'm sure that there was a reason to have a mandatory day off. Is that, I mean, even, even if they would like to do it because of the, the pay, I worry about the well-being of the firefighters. Is that coming to play at all?
So I will tell you, I am not a fan of any buyback programs because of what, exactly what you said. The, the vacation is for you to get away and to decompress and to deal with the, the problems of being a firefighter. During this crisis, I can support it because it is voluntary. If someone feels like they really need that time off, they can take it. There's no penalty. We're not, you know, harassing them about taking it. These are people that feel that they can give it up for the financial compensation. I would not be in favor of a permanent buyback program. I am not in favor of firefighters selling vacation days. Those days are for them to recoup for their mental health and so that they are ready, rested, and able to serve. Knowing that the amount of overtime that we're working is a safety issue, this became a lesser of two evils by them doing this. We've got people willing to step up, and I think that's what's important. You have firefighters that are committed to the mission of serving the city. They want to step up. They're willing to give up this benefit time to get us past this staffing crisis, and we just want to make sure that they're compensated for them doing that.
So you don't expect this to continue next year?
I surely hope not. I will say that this was semi-planned. When we wrote our last contract, it was a retirement-based contract. At the moment that we sign that contract, 40% of our department could retire. By the end of the four years of that contract lifespan, 80% of our department could retire. It was a drastic increase of their pension base so that firefighters could afford to retire. We knew that we were going to have an outpouring of experience. We did not anticipate the pandemic. We did not anticipate other departments raising their salaries and creating a complicated issue of junior members leaving, and that is something that this council and the administration must address. But I do not anticipate this to continue on as long as we get ahead of this and we start dealing with the pay issues in the coming cycles for, for legislation and budget.
Thank you.
Councilmember Volan?
So I have the, a similar problem with the definition of the word squad. I simply don't understand what it means. I know it's a basic term to you all, but I think that we need it explained to us. What is a squad? Who makes up a squad? And how does this and the previous ordinance play into the use of squads? Can you please explain?
I will. I think it may be a really good foundation just to lay out the evolution of how this came about. When I became chief in 2016, we talked about alternative response models, other things we could do to help leave the large trucks available for the calls that they're really needed on. One decision that was made very early in my tenure was to establish the squad. The squad has had several evolutions. It's been an SUV. It is now an F-150 pickup truck so that they can carry all the equipment they need. It was originally established to run medical calls. We also realized we did not...
Just to be clear, so in other words, it's a way of responding to a call that does not involve a large fire engine, an apparatus, a ladder. It's just a, a truck that's specially outfitted?
Yes.
Okay.
So it has a very specific purpose within our department. It fills for... It fills for emergency medical calls, and it also fills in for the safety and accountability officer. It is staffed by two sworn firefighters. One is a sergeant, which is an acting officer that we refer to as the squad officer, and one is a squad driver, which is an engineer or one of our acting drivers. And the two together make up a very key component of not only the emergency medical response side, but they also are that safety and accountability on our fire scenes. So fast-forwarding from 2016 till now.
Wait a second. When you say they also make up safety and accountability, you mean to say that the squad also gets dispatched on calls that do involve apparatuses and they function as safety officers? Is that it?
Yes. One of the key problems I found when I got here relating to firefighter safety and health is that we did not have an assigned safety officer on all of our major incidents. So reading line-of-duty death reports, that is a key contributor to killing firefighters. And we made a conscious effort to figure out how we could address that issue in the most fiscally responsible way, and it was decided that the squad would be that mechanism to carry out that function.
Okay, so that's a squad. So, well, I guess we have to hear from the union to understand their objection, but perhaps you could characterize it. I mean, in your understanding, what is their concern about the hiring of this, I mean, about this ordinance, I should say, with respect to how squads work?
I think the biggest concerns I heard was with the squad being shut down, that this may be a replacement.
Okay, when the squad's being shut down?
So during our staffing shortages, we have allowed the battalion chief to take the squad offline, which means it will not respond to anything.
Maybe I should ask how many squads are on duty at any given time?
There's one squad that operates within the city. It is supposed to be up 24 hours a day, seven days a week. With the staffing shortages that we have run into, the battalion chiefs have the authority to basically brunt it out or shut it down for the day, run it with one person instead of two. We have given the battalion chiefs that authority to be able to make that in order to prevent additional forced overtimes. It is not something that we like, it is never something that our fire department likes is to drop below what we consider minimum staffing. But knowing that it was the newest resource and that it would have the least impact to the citizens, it was a calculated risk that we did. And again, I'm taking on-call and others are taking on-call to make sure that we're filling the most vital roles of it. It is not efficient to have it shut down. But when I'm trying to balance out firefighter safety and health of overworking versus this resource being taken offline, this was a balanced decision, and it was seen to be a more feasible solution than just constantly forcing more firefighters to work forced overtimes.
Okay, thank you for, that'll do for now. I may have more. Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Flaherty.
Another portion of the ordinance I wanted to call attention to is the effective 3% additional compensation raise for this year, noting that the contract, the union contract only required a 2% increase, but that civil city staff had a 5% salary increase this past year, given the inflationary environment we're in. And so I think the note in the staff memo is that they effectively receive an additional 3% for their 2022 base salary, but would like to note, of course, that everybody else in the city who received a 5%, civil city staff who received a 5% salary increase, that's, you know, going to be available in perpetuity and the bar from which we're raising salaries in the future. And of course, the union contract, I assume, wouldn't replicate that. So it's an effective raise for this year, but not necessarily for future years. So it sort of brings them back down to a lower point for future raises. So I guess I'm curious to, A, check that assumption and make sure I'm understanding that correctly, B, double-check, is the contract extended through the end of 2024? Is that right? And then, C, you know, what are, are there any assurances from the administration or intention with regard to how to handle that going forward? It might be, there might be reasons why it was structured as a, you know, two-part bonus this year, and it can be replicated in the future, but I'm curious to unpack that a little more. Thank you.
Yeah, no decisions have been made, but we do intend to evaluate firefighter compensation and propose something for the 2024 budget. So unfortunately, I don't have any, anything specific though at this time. But in terms of, you know, whether or not there's another one-time bonus or whether or not there's something else, I don't know, but we are looking at this issue of salaries.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Go ahead.
I guess put a finer point in question on, around the long-term role of the new position, the new sworn position, Assistant Chief of Operations as staffing comes online. So I understand, I think, I appreciate you explaining the nature of the squad program, its development, how it's used, as well as the current staffing situation with forced overtimes, where battalion chiefs have the authority to shut down for the day or otherwise operate with one person, the squad. So the question, I think, and the concern we heard, which you articulated already, is that the new Assistant Chief of Operations will displace that popular program within the, or at least partially displace that program within the department. And I guess what I'm looking to clarify is that as staffing comes online and is available without the risk of forced overtimes, is the expectation or commitment that the squad will continue to function as a full-time program 24/7 as it had been, and the Assistant Chief of Operations duties and role would shift away from this emergency gap-filling situation and instead towards some of the operational needs that you expressed a desire to fill for most of your tenure now? Is that right?
Yes, very good question and very good synopsis of where we're heading. I will say that we're not displacing. We have a critical gap when that squad is shut down of something that needs to happen. This is a resource to help me fill that gap temporarily until we're up to full staffing, and then the squad can resume. And I will tell you, it is our most successful program that we've put together to date. It is my intention that when we are fully staffed, that the squad is fully staffed, that we no longer allow it to be shut down once we get past the staffing crisis, and that the Assistant Chief of Operations can resume more administrative functions that will help us solidify the way the three shifts operate, provide written guidance to new firefighters on how we should operate, and investigate and deal with all of our health and safety issues and all the other problems that come from a very young department. So I am making a firm commitment in the public that this is not going to take away, in fact, this adds an additional sworn member to our department. It has to come from the inside. So by state law, under the Board of Public Safety rules, this has to be an internal hire from within the ranks. So this is increasing pay for a sworn member, this is creating promotional opportunities for other sworn members, and it is not my intention ever to reduce or remove the squad nor the personnel that are on that squad and have it replaced with civilians or this new position. I need the squad. I want the squad. Once we're past the staffing crisis, I fully intend to restore it to its full function, and then we will have a greater capacity for all the administrative functions dealing with operations going forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Additional questions? Okay, let's go to public comment then on ordinance 2313. If you would, please approach the podium. If you have comments to make, Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to speak to ordinance 2313, please let us know by using the raise hand feature in your control bar or by sending the meeting host a chat.
Okay.
Jordan Canada, Union President. You just heard Emily on the previous ordinance talk about how three sworn positions would be rearranged, but yet the fire chief is, his intention is not to replace it with civilians. So just us finding this out, as I stated earlier, this is being rushed. We need to slow down, hit the pause button, and come back to this after your guys' recess, because this has financial impacts, let alone what the chief read off about layoffs. We have certification pay, we have squad pay for this situation, but if the administration is saying that our three sworn, or the sworn positions will be rearranged, the chief isn't, what, which way am I supposed to make up this? What are you supposed to make up it? Am I just supposed to go along with it and say, oh, we'll figure it out later?
Because we need what the chief just said in writing. If he's not going to put civilians on it, great. If the assistant ops chief is just going to be another set of eyes, great. And if the squad is going to continue and be the success it is, fantastic. But right now, it just seems to be a little bit of lip service coming from each administration. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Canada. Additional public comment here in chambers? Welcome, if you would, please share your name for the record.
My name is Sean Hutton-Locker. I'm the Secretary of Treasure for the Fire Union. I just had a couple of comments here about that. One thing I want to say first is that it just seems to be, to reiterate what Canada was saying there, seems to be a very rushed decision. It seems like we're in the midst of this chaotic situation, where we're very short-staffed, and we continually try to come up with these quick fixes, immediate decisions, that each one are just chipping away at our budget. We're coming up with programs that may or may not have a big impact on retention. I think that, I know I've emailed back and forth with a lot of you and sent a lot of information, I think it would be fair to say that retention is our biggest issue. I don't think anybody has said shortage of chiefs is our biggest issue. I think that retention has got to be one of our biggest issues. This position, as the chief mentioned, will be hired from within, which takes another one of our full-time positions. I would question, how is that process going to happen? Are we going to hire a new full-time firefighter and then move that chief up? If so, we all know that takes a long time. If we expect this to be resolved by next year anyways, then what are we doing? Are we wasting our time hiring a chief that we may or may not need to fill in for squad duties and safety officer now that we may not need those duties later? And again, that's just more coming off of our budget for future retention. It's arguably the biggest issue we have is pay-related retention. And this is just another thing that takes away from that. I've got about a minute left here, let's see, I had some other notes. I would say that, I would argue where a safety officer may, or lack of, safety officer on scene may be a cause of line-of-duty deaths, and there's certainly data to show that, I would argue that overworked firefighters and mismatched crews are probably a bigger cause of line-of-duty deaths, all of which are not being addressed in this and may actually be hindered in this if you're taking one of our firefighters away for this position. So I believe that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Lucas, do we have any commenters on Zoom?
No, I don't believe so.
Any additional comments here in chambers? Welcome, if you would, please share your name for the record after you've signed in, and then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Wes Martin. I'm chairman of the local 586 Political Action Committee. Our primary concern when it comes to this ordinance is twofold. One is that we are potentially moving sworn personnel off of the squad. As Chief Moore has said, that's a very successful program, and it's something that improves the patient outcomes and the outcomes of our residents, particularly in the downtown area. The second issue that labor takes with this ordinance, especially with reference to the Assistant Chief of Operations, is that the safety and accountability job is two jobs, and those are both performed by sworn personnel on the squad. When there is a fire, when there is a mass response from our department, those two sworn personnel provide safety and accountability. Those are two separate jobs, and when one person is tasked with both, it decreases, let me rephrase that, it increases the likelihood that we have an incident or that we are unable to find, locate, or keep track of our personnel. Chief Moore may be comfortable with taking that on himself to provide safety and accountability on scene, but that is certainly not something that our personnel believes that the fire chief should have to do. We have this position, and our positions on the squad are built around that for a reason. Unfortunately, this has led to the resignation of some considerably talented personnel, including a firefighter that has served this department for 22 years. And that, I think, alone is a travesty. And I think rather than replacing our firefighters and taking over their responsibilities, we need to address the root problem, which is simply to hire more firefighters. And as chief said, we are working on that. We have 21 firefighters in the pipeline currently. But by taking away positions and removing responsibilities from sworn personnel, I believe that that would decrease patient outcomes in the downtown, and I believe it would put our personnel at risk on fire scenes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Additional comments here in chambers? Or on Zoom? Seeing none, let's come back to council for additional questions. Councilmember Volan.
I'm afraid I'm at a loss here. I mean, I, on the one hand, we have a contract in place, on the other hand, we have a dispute over, not, I mean, pay is an issue, but this is really a logistical conundrum. And one thing I don't understand is how what Mr. Martin just said affects the squad. In other words, with the ordinance we postponed, there's going to be a hiring of three people who would become part of the squad, would be the ones who, I mean, the union is saying that the two sworn officers would somehow be moved off the squad. Can someone clarify this for me? Chief Moore?
I would love to clarify this. So what we have said, this entire package, Assistant Chief of Operations, three new civilians, there are portions of the squad duties that we could restore sooner than it takes for us to hire all 21 of these people and get them fully trained. I can hire a civilian within about six weeks. It takes over four months to hire a new firefighter by the time we go through the statutory processes, the physicals, and everything we do. This is a more rapid solution to getting some of those necessary services that he's described. It is not going to have a civilian on the squad. They are mobile integrated healthcare workers. Of our four current ones, two have never been field practitioners running 911 calls. An additional two of the four left 911 response services because they were burned out, and this was an opportunity for them to re-engage their career skills in a more helpful and more mentally sustainable way for them. We cannot jeopardize this mobile integrated healthcare program by fast-forwarding, and I cannot have civilians and sworn members in my department pitted against each other. There are things that the squad does today that a civilian could easily do, and I've elaborated at least one of them, lift assists. The firefighters have actively said this is not something we should be doing. Mobile integrated healthcare workers can, they could, and they would improve outcomes by being instantly engaged. I will not take sworn members off of an apparatus, change the name of it, and start sending civilians out to do the same jobs. That is not what is being proposed, that cannot happen. We have two separate medical licenses, one for the emergency 911 side, one for the mobile integrated healthcare side. The civilians are hired under the mobile integrated healthcare license, they cannot do this. So some of the concerns and the fears are moot points. It cannot happen. I am also here in public in front of my firefighters and you saying, this is not my desire. When I brought my concerns to Mayor Hamilton about this program, and I said, I have concerns, he said, it is your department to run. You can administer these new personnel the way you see fit and the way that it best serves our community. So I am making a firm commitment that we are not swapping, we are not going to suddenly next year say, let's eliminate four sworn positions. We are trying to add capacity to deal with this crisis right now, and then as this crisis subsides, we will have greater capacity to take additional sworn duty issues off of things they don't even want to do. There are over 1,000 lift-assist calls that happen from the hours from nine to five over the past year. They don't want to do them, and MIH could do that. I have got a lot of things I've got to do, I've got a lot of pieces I have to arrange, but I am publicly committing to not doing what their fear is.
Maybe I should ask, in what vehicle will these new civilian positions take action?
They currently have three vehicles assigned to them. They are not response-rated, they do not have lights and sirens. The calls that they would be going on, they are considered what we call alpha calls, they are non-emergent calls right now. So this is.
But they come through 911, but they're not really, they don't rise to the level of a formal sworn officer response?
They don't rise to the level of light- They don't rise to the level of lights and sirens disrupting, having the danger of impeding the yielding of the traffic flow. These are calls that we accepted knowing that this program was coming online and that we may be able to switch that over to a more sustainable and a more realistic resource other than the sworn firefighters.
Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Chief Moore, and folks from the union. The question I have that seems to be rolling around in my head is, is there a time pressure that we're looking at? The union folks are asking for a little, some time to try to work it out with you all so that we don't have to kind of worry about negotiating a contract, you know, up here. Is there a time pressure? And if you can speak to that, that will help me understand.
I don't agree with you. I have some very same concerns of our union. We have shut down a vital resource in the city to get past this crisis. This is a faster solution to having some of those sources, resources back up and running sooner than it's going to take for me to train 21 new firefighters. So, if it comes down to a time crisis, we want to delay this. I am shutting down the squad on average four times a week right now. So, that will not stop, even if I hire these new people. But the calls, like the lift assist and things that that squad would be taking, could potentially be stood up, and we could have a program up and running within six weeks, not the six months it takes to hire a sworn firefighter. So, I guess if we're going to say, is there a delay? The union has told us this is an issue, that it could affect patient outcomes in the downtown. I firmly agree. When we are at a position, when we are not using the most efficient resource, when we're not using people that are properly trained, which is not what I'm suggesting, there are poor outcomes. What the administration is suggesting is that this would be a faster way to restore parts of those services while we get past the crisis. And then after the crisis, we would have a greater capacity for dealing with all of these things that have been burdening our sworn members.
Yes, I wanted to come back to one of the points that Mr. Martin made. Are sworn personnel currently paid more to take charge of safety or accountability at the scene? And would they be losing that?
So, the squad officer and the squad driver do receive command appointment pay. And whether the squad is shut down or not, we do not remove command appointment pays on a temporary basis. If this department, the mayor, the administration, the council had a will to discontinue that program, there would no longer be a reason to pay that pay. But we are not intending on removing any of those command appointments or the extra pay for that extra capacity that these members have earned through certifications, training, and riding in the seat, doing the job. So, I guess to answer plainly, we're not going to remove any pay from any firefighters during this crisis, and it will not happen in the future when we're fully staffed. I fully intend to have the squad fully staffed with the people that are certified to be in those positions and pay them appropriately.
So, the new Assistant Chief, would that person not do the job that is currently being paid for by the command pay to the squad members?
No. So, what I'm suggesting is, while we're in this gap of not having that squad up and running, that this will be another person within my department that can help make sure that critical step is done. Currently, it's me. I live in the city. If there is a fire after hours and they tell me the squad is out, I will respond from my house, and I will make sure that is filled. When it comes down to questioning about the safety, accountability, and everything else, and it's two different jobs, we did that on purpose to help improve the outcomes, because we are young. We did that based on lessons that I learned by killing nine firefighters where I came from. To have this question as to whether or not I would put our firefighters at risk by making this decision is appalling to me. I do everything I do because I care about them and I care about our citizens. When I am coming to you as a department head saying that this is our best way forward right now, that is what I'm suggesting. I understand the fears. That has come from a lack of communication while I was out. I am addressing that promptly. When it comes down to, this is rushed. I think we've heard that this is a critical situation that needs to be addressed. I am not suggesting that this is the permanent fix for firefighter pay and retention. I am making a recommendation that this is a way we can get past this now while we're in crisis and set us up for more success in the future. And I guess that's where I would like to leave this, is everything I do is to look out for their safety, for their well-being, so they can serve our citizens.
I'd like to go back to a statement that was made in the beginning, talking about the lack of ambulance services in our community. And I'd like to get to the bottom of why that, which I understand is under the auspices of IU Health, now becomes the problem of the city of Bloomington and the Fire Department in order to fill that gap. And it's also refreshing to hear that this is being called a crisis, because these are things I've been hearing from the rank and file and folks that I have done ride-alongs with and spoken with for a while. So, clearly, we have a crisis that we're dealing with. I'm trying to get to the bottom of who else owns this problem? Why do we have a lack of ambulances in the city of Bloomington that IU Health has typically been responsible for? They've certainly been to my house on a number of occasions when I had elder parents that I was caring for. And having just been on a ride-along with Battalion Five, when the full rig had to go on a call to pick up someone who had fallen, I understand that's a total waste of our resources. So, I can understand the kind of the pressure to bring in more civilians, more EMTs, to do that kind of work, allegedly because we have the money to do it, because we have so many staff shortages right now. But my underlying question is, what's going on in our community with regard to healthcare and IU Health that we do not have enough ambulances to serve the 911 calls in our community? Can you answer that? Do you work with IU Health at all in trying to figure out what's going wrong on their end that's causing us these fiscal dilemmas?
Yeah, I would like to address this very directly. We have come forward with our state of the public safety reports. I report to the Board of Public Safety every month. We are seeing unprecedented increases in emergency 911 calls in this community. We are not the only responders. There are police, there are fire, there is IU Health Lifeline Ambulance Service. There is also a statewide shortage of firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics. This is not something that is just in our community. This is across the entire state of Indiana, and most likely extends beyond the state. We are here trying to pick up a piece of our community. They expect when they call 911 that someone will show up. If an ambulance cannot be there because it's coming from another county, which is what is happening several times a day right now, we make sure that someone's there, because that was the expectation. We are trained. We can stabilize it. There's a lot of calls that don't need to be a 911 call that we go to when the ambulances are not available. I am telling you that this is not just an issue here. This is an issue across the entire state. If you listen to the governor's address, healthcare is on his list of priorities. The mobile integrated healthcare is a way to fill those gaps. This is not unique to Bloomington. We are picking up a piece so that we do not have a city of Bloomington resident laying on the floor or hurt or injured or sick, waiting for a resource that may be 30 or 40 minutes out. So, when it comes down to it, I think I'm just trying to put this in perspective. If you call 911, you expect someone to be there. If you call 911 and there's not a resource available, we are now stepping in and trying to fill that gap while they hire more people. I would like to point out that we had 11 firefighters start on Monday. They are in an EMT class with IU Health Lifeline, who has an additional 20 employees in that class. They are trying to address their shortages, just like we're trying to address ours. This is a big piece of the puzzle, and I'm just saying that we took a bite of it because that's what our community expects, and that we are, as emergency service leaders in all the different branches of emergency service, are trying to address these issues. So, I think that's it. In a macro, there is a lack of firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics which staff these 911 services. And all of us, including IU Health Lifeline, are scrambling trying to hire and train and retain what they have.
Additional questions? Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Volan.
Can I have permission to ask questions of the union representatives?
Yes, it's almost like a second period of public comment, but.
I mean, I, but I think it's relevant here. Mr. Canada? I know that you feel like you haven't had a lot of time to address this issue. But what you have asked us for is to postpone to after recess. I feel like I don't fully understand the problem, even though I've heard quite a bit tonight. I would at least like to get your reaction as the union president to what you've heard based on our questions. Can you clarify for us, at the very least, what is the union's concern about the use of the squad and its relationship to the new civilian staff proposed in the other ordinance?
So, less, like I stated, less than a week ago, it was brought up. Had I not read the packet and had the conversations that I did have, and then as Emily stated, the sworn personnel would be rearranged. That's a big no-no.
This sworn personnel will be rearranged?
That's what she got up and talked about. So, that's where the squad comes into play of the EMS care, is that, that part. And then with the Ops Chief, we have not had any discussion from city administration or fire administration with this, with putting this into service. That's why I would like to hit the brakes, so we could discuss this and have a better game plan to execute it. Because as he was talking about alpha calls and lift assists, the squad does not do lift assists. I want to make that point. The fire engines do. And if we're only worried about lift assists 9:00 AM through 5:00 PM, then we still get called out during the night to go to houses of wealth. So, we are still responding to these, no matter what, with the compensation of only 150 hours that is brought up in this current ordinance. And then when we see that there is over $460,000 being put into this, we are feeling unheard and unseen. That's why we want to stop, regroup, talk about it, and then possibly move forward on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Flaherty.
I would invite a comment from both Mr. Canada and Chief Moore, potentially with respect to the impacts of delay of various timelines. Delaying by one week for the last regular session prior to our council recess, as well as delaying about six weeks until after the council recess. In particular, what is the potential impact of those delays in terms of services? But additionally, what would a delay of either of those time periods allow in terms of the conversation that folks are asking for? Like, what would that actually look like? It's not typically the council's role, for instance, to be directly involved in these types of negotiations, but I think for a few reasons, including ones that Chief Moore has mentioned, you know, communication wasn't ideal leading up to this directly, and I hear that, you know, desire for more time. I also hear the desire for increased compensation or retention and focusing on those core issues, which I think we're all motivated to do in the coming year. And can talk more about that. Those are both and issues to me. But I guess I want to know specifically with respect to what further conversation or discussion could be had and what the potential downsides are to delaying about one week and about six weeks. Thank you.
I appreciate the question. So, if we were to do this today, I could essentially have HR post our jobs. We could go to hire tomorrow, right? If this is all approved and we get all this done. You want to delay, all it does is push back from the entire advertising period and everything else. So, delay of implementation, I will have several weeks of getting everything out, accepting applications. So, for us to iron out all the details can happen while we have people in queue. I will tell you, I have a lot of concerns about how we physically make some of these happen within the computer-driven dispatch system. I have to make sure our medical licensing is covering everything. So, if we were to delay, I'm always in favor of more time, but we've heard how critical this is. So, what I'm asking for is a tool in the toolbox that I've been assured that we can implement appropriately, doing the due diligence, making sure that we do not violate anything that we shouldn't violate. We can capture input. We can start doing all those things. Delaying of that, I'm going to be doing that anyway, because it is my hope and my intention that we finally have this new tool in our toolbox to address the needs of our community. So, I guess in plain, if it's delayed, I'll have the discussions. If it's not delayed, I'll have the discussions. The only thing that we may potentially do by delaying this is if we were to tomorrow, sit down and iron out all the details, and you delay, I cannot implement this. If you go through with it, we can iron out all the details, and we can implement it. So, I think publicly I've addressed a lot of the union's concerns. I am committing that we are not going to be doing some of the things that they are worried about. So, I would just put it back to, they've said this is an issue. The delay of service could affect outcomes. If we want to delay and we have a bad outcome, is that something we're all willing to accept? And that's where it's at. So, I'll leave it to President Canada if he wants to add anything else.
So, currently, the squad has five of the six positions filled. So, they will be in service, excluding vacations and Kelly days. If you approve this tonight, you're signing a blank check. You're just saying, yeah, let's go ahead. We don't know what the details are. By delaying it, we get to sit down and figure out what the details are, with the responsibilities, the job descriptions, and how they get dispatched. Yes?
Councilmember Flaherty, does that speak to your question? Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes, I guess, I never like to be in a position to hurry up, hurry up, and make a decision because we're about to go on vacation. I don't like being put in that position. So, my question is, how long has this been a crisis? And when could this have been brought to this body sooner for approval? This is probably for the administration.
Thank you for the question. Due to my medical issue where I was out, these were all things that were being thought of and being discussed right before I left. The decisions that happened and how this has come out while I was out, I have reviewed all the financials. I've reviewed all the plans, and I agree with the decision that was made. So, to say that this is half-hazard or that we didn't think it out, this is something that's been occurring for the entire little over six weeks that I had been out for dealing with my medical issue. What I will apologize publicly is that the union found out about it a week ago. I found out about it a week ago. I was out, completely unplugged, thanks to the city for allowing me to have my recovery. And I have been back, and I have been trying to do due diligence to make sure that all these things are communicated, address the concerns, the fears, and everything else. We knew when we started the mobile integrated healthcare program, this is an avenue it could go down. We have a pathway forward. We know what we need to do to check all the boxes to do this properly. We know that we have onboarded new positions. We know how to do this. We could do this very quickly and easily. If the union wants input, they have input in every aspect of our department. If the union wants to run the department, then they need to apply to be the fire chief. And I am not here to put myself at odds with them. I work with them. I rely on them. I need them. I am a citizen of the city. If my house catches on fire, I need them to be there. I am not at odds. I am saying that we had some missteps that I am making up for, and that we are going to move forward in a collaborative approach to get this done so that we can alleviate all their concerns and ultimately do what our department does best, serve our citizens in their time of need.
Councilmember Volan?
This question is for Ms. Fields. So, the memo for ordinance 2312, we've postponed, is dated May 29th. Mr. Moore was, Chief Moore was out on medical leave. So, this has been a discussion in HR with the administration, with the mayor's office. When did you, who initiated this ordinance? Who, I mean, did it come from you or did it come from upstairs? I mean, I don't quite get how it came to be.
This was definitely in collaboration with the Fire Department, with the now deputy chief. But in conversations with the mayor, this has been talked about with Corporation Council and the controller, and to develop this ordinance. Did you say, I'm sorry, 2312 or 2313?
Well, I mean, both of them. They're related. When was the earliest conversation about this topic?
We have been talking about the compensation piece, the, let me see what section that's in. I mean, I really couldn't tell you a specific date, but first.
No, but April, March, February?
I know we've been talking with the union about the compensation piece, the additional 3%, or up to it, for a while. The other provisions have been talked about with the mayor prior to it being necessarily discussed with me, so I'm not sure when those things have been...
When was it discussed with you first?
When was it discussed with me?
When did you first enter this conversation? The Chief Moore was out for six weeks, so it had to be before that.
It's kind of evolved. I would say in the last three to four weeks, we've really...
Okay.
Yeah. The last, I'm trying to think of, I mean, it's been talked about, but then solidified recently, yes.
Okay. No, you've answered my question, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Additional questions? Oh, Chief Moore, I'm sorry.
I would like to provide one point of clarification. And this is just, again, it's hard when you put us on spot to try to figure out. But as I've been trying to reconstruct the decisions that were made while I was out, the very first discussion, official memorandum that came out on this with the union discussions on the Kelly Day buyback, all these other things that have occurred, I have a memorandum from Deputy Chief Washell dated May 8th. So if that kind of puts a timeline on how long this has kind of been discussed, and they've been working on solutions while I was out, that is the official memorandum that I have from Deputy Chief Washell to the mayor, making recommendations for incentives and other things to help with retention and other problems with the staffing.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, I would agree. We had our last meeting with Mayor Hamilton on May 11th about this, and the three items of the buyback and the BCS and the 3%. What we have not discussed is the three FTEs from the previous ordinance and the addition of this chief, and their roles and responsibilities. And that's what I was referring to earlier as, let's pump the brakes and figure it out, because I just found out about it on the 4th or 5th.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan?
I don't have further questions. I just wanted, I was wondering if we're going to go to comment, because I'd like to comment.
Not yet. Question, Councilmember Rosenberg.
Is there any way, I mean, we're talking about delaying it past our recess, which is a long time, that's six weeks, right? Is there anything that a week can do here? I mean, if one of the, a big apprehension is a lack of detail in what we have now, is there any way a week can be given to add more detail and we can discuss it next week?
Is that a question to me, or to them?
No, it's not too good.
I would say that, you know, we are looking forward to posting for that engineering position, because that is an immediate need, and that is in the first ordinance that I presented. So delaying that would delay that, that, you know, job advertisement. If there's a way to create an amendment or something like that, I don't know, but that would be my concern.
Councilmember Flaherty?
In anticipation of this, I did have staff prepare an amendment for this ordinance to remove the Assistant Chief of Operations position. And while we were talking, had them also prepare an amendment to remove the three new FTEs from the other ordinance. We do have amendments on hand for both those things. If we wanted to pass the ordinances tonight and address those in a new ordinance, the complication that might introduce is the fact that it would be a new ordinance, we'd need to be prepared by Friday, we would need to have first reading next week, and be willing, as a council, to consider passage of the ordinance that night, if we were trying to pass it before recess, functionally creating a one-week, you know, delay. So it's possible. We have amendments on hand, I'm just noting it's a little bit complicated and creates some uncertainty as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Volan?
I'm not sure that what Councilmember Flaherty has just said would address the concern that Councilmember Rosenberg just asked about. I mean, if there's a chance that we can resolve the issue in a week, we don't need to amend out those items, and the amending out would create a new, I mean, I'm not sure I would want to give consent to consider in one night, just because we should find another way to solve it.
To clarify, I meant if we also wanted to pass the other ordinances tonight for the sake of, for instance, the engineering position that Ms. Fields just expressed some urgency around. So that would be the way to both accomplish passing everything but the fire portions of the ordinances tonight, and pass the fire portions next week. Again, it would require some hurdles. I'm not saying it's a desired pathway, I'm just saying it's possible.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Madam Chair, I just want to remind everybody that there is an amendment already, that was already in the packet addendum to ordinance 2313. I don't know if it would be appropriate to bring that forward now, because there's all this talk of postponing and amending, I don't know.
Why don't you hold that for just a second? Councilmember Volan, or no?
I mean, I just want to get to some kind of debate here, because we have some open questions among us, and, you know, we've asked a lot of questions.
Yeah. Let me ask a couple of questions here, because I haven't had a turn yet, but check me on my understanding of all this, okay? What I'm hearing is, in part because the union just found out about this recently and hasn't had an enormous amount of time to digest this, in part because, Chief Moore, you're returning from a leave. What I'm hearing in general is that additional time might be beneficial and would allow for some discussions. I think the question about whether or not a week is enough is a good one. And so I'm wondering if postponing 2312 and 2313 to next week would make sense, even if we come back together and decide to postpone till after recess, it's, we're no further behind than if we postpone till after recess tonight. So could, what do you think? I'm not sure even what I'm asking you, but...
So I think I would like to address this. If there is a will of this council to separate it, to delay it, potentially it could get pushed past your recess, all we're going to do is delay a solution. If this is about us ironing out the details within our union, which we have full management right to be able to run the department, it's within the management rights of our contract. I don't lean on management rights, I don't say that's how we're going to do it, iron-fist it, but we're coming down to a foundational disagreement on how this department may run. Whether or not it's done by sworn or civilian does not change the fact that there are citizens that need our help, we are short-staffed, and that this is an option that may be able to provide services to people that need help. If we would like to delay it, to give me more time, I've told you, I am always in favor of more time, but I have literally sat here and listened to even my union say this is critical, there are going to be poor patient outcomes by not having these things happen. Anytime there's a delay, there could be poor outcomes. I'm not going to tell you that I'm going to come here and fear monger, bang a fist on the podium and say someone's going to die. The likelihood is, is it could happen at any moment. Whether we do this tonight, whether we do this in a week, whether we do this in six weeks, or whether we wait for the next administration to address it, it is not going to fundamentally fix that we are down 21 firefighters today. It is not going to fundamentally fix that I have been asking for career staff positions for six years, and this is an opportunity to make it happen. It is not going to fix the crisis that we're in right now. It may help it make it better. It will give me capacity when we come out of this crisis to be a better functioning department. So if you say, if I give you another week, can you make a better decision? Absolutely. You give me all the time in the world, I can always make a better decision. If you're asking me if a week, I can't iron out the details with our union, address their concerns, I don't need a week. I think I've done a lot of that tonight. If they want input, they have input. I have talked with every one of the squad members and alleviated their concerns, right? I understand that when things happen quickly, it creates chaos and confusion. We live in chaos, confusion. My job is to help manage chaos and confusion. If you want to give me another week, that's your purview. If you want to do it today, I am telling you today, in front of everyone, that I will continue to work with my staff to come up with the best solution. I am not the smartest person in the room. I have very smart people that are around me that can help us make this work. So delay it or not, I would like to have this done. If you delay it, all you're doing is potentially handcuffing us if we do get to a point where we can reach a consensus before you readdress this and bring it back up. So I think that's as plain as I can be, is, we're in crisis, this is an option, we would like to move forward with it, and I can tell you that we will work out the details, because it's not going to negatively impact anyone. That's not how this works. I need them. I need them to do the jobs they do. The civilians are already proving their worth of saving lives and helping people that otherwise have not received service in our community. If this is a bad idea overall, then that's where this needs to come and say, we just think it's a bad idea. If we think that this is not a great idea at this particular moment, that's within your purview. I am telling you as the expert, subject matter expert running this department, that this is a path forward, that I can work with my union to alleviate their concerns, and I am not going to remove our most successful program to date to replace it with something that will cause more chaos and cause more issues in my department and the community. So if that helps, then that's where I'd like to leave it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, did you want to comment?
Union President. So it seems like our crisis is the Lift Assist, which we are handling extremely well. And moving forward on that, it seems, as he said, as Chief Moore said previously, he has to figure out the dispatch issues. What are their roles and responsibilities? That's all I've been saying this whole time, let's pump the brakes till after the recess to come together and figure this out. I'm not standing in anybody's way, I just want to come together, find a solution, and move forward.
Do you have a response to my question about, would a week make a difference?
A week, yeah, between, so it wouldn't just be myself and Chief Moore sitting down, it would be our, most of our executive board, our VP and Secretary Treasurer, so schedules will become hectic in trying to get all four or five of us in the same area, and if he wants to add other chiefs into that meeting as well. So that's why I request till the recess.
Thank you. And I didn't address you correctly, I know it's Mr. Canada, sorry.
I can raise this hand up?
No, that's fine. Questions? Comments? Comments, Councilmember Volan?
So this is messy, but, you know, I take Chief Moore's point that we have something of a crisis, at least in the way the department operates. I take Mr. Canada's point that the union heard about it with very little time. I will say that it was not an inordinate, an ordnantly small amount of time. The union heard about it when it went out of the packet. This is our standard process. It went out on, what was it, the 4th, Friday the 4th? And not everybody's used to the way we do things, but we have first reading, the Wednesday after the Friday the packet goes out, we don't talk about it till second reading. This is the second reading. In the past, we would have had at least an extra week built into our process, where this would have been a committee of the whole. We had a minimum of, you know, two weeks from first reading, there would have been, like, in the past, before this year, this wouldn't have been heard until June 21st, it was introduced on June 7th. So this is the consequence of the way we changed our process in order to handle legislation. We have no obligation to approve stuff on second reading, period. I am definitely in favor of at least one week. I don't feel the need to postpone to after recess, because we might be able to resolve some issues in the next week. It's always hard to schedule, I get that. But if there's one thing that's more important to this body, I mean, because the thing is, we're not asking Chief Moore, we're not asking the union, the union and Chief Moore are asking us, and we're the ones who have to make the decision. And if I've done nothing as a member these years, it's been hold out for the right of members to inquire and to fully understand the question at hand. At the same time, we don't have all day. If we decide we want to postpone or punt the issue to the next administration, you know, fine, but I don't have enough information now to make an intelligent decision. And I'm going to demand that we be able to fully understand the question. I also want to point out that it's nobody's fault here. Chief Moore was out, the union wasn't used to our process, heard about it late. I only heard about their concern maybe a week ago. So there hasn't been a lot of time. I mean, I just want to say to them, welcome to my world, it's been a while, you know, I'm always having to deal with this. So I would like to, I mean, I'm willing to sit down with anybody who wants to, and we could even make it a notice meeting if we need to, on Monday or Tuesday, just to hash out this problem, but this is an intersection of an emergent problem in the management of the department with the relationship between the administration and the union. And I don't want them to be mixed together. I want to untangle those issues. I want to get this right, and I want to make sure that, I mean, because I know that it's easy for the union to, to, what's the word I'm looking for, to ascribe motives that aren't there. So I take the chief at his word that he's trying to do the best level thing he can do, and I also take the union at their word that they don't understand it, and they're concerned about how it will affect their jobs going forward. We shouldn't let an emergency situation dictate, or wind up dictating, good policy down the road. So I favor a one-week postponement for both ordinances. I don't think we need to pass anything tonight, we've got a sanitation ordinance we still have to hear as well, so all the more reason to postpone. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thanks. I also would support postponing a week, noting that I actually won't be here next week, unfortunately, to vote on it, but I would be highly likely to support both ordinances as written. I appreciate the engagement both tonight and in additional calls with folks from both the union and with Chief Moore. The major concerns I've heard expressed, both tonight and in those calls, I feel like have been addressed. We have, you know, the chief's guarantee tonight that nothing about, you know, this is a stopgap measure that will also be needed once fully, once we are fully staffed with sworn positions, that the squad program will remain in effect, it's a 24/7 program, you know, that is fully implemented, and that the new Assistant Chief of Operations position will move to other duties. Addressing a few concerns, Mr. Canada said, you know, we need what Chief Moore said in writing. I guess I disagree. These are public meetings with minutes and a record, and that will be in writing, and I think Chief Moore is a, you know, a trusted department head, and I believe that we can take him at his word, what he said tonight. So that's one, you know, I think there's, we've heard some concerns related to this taking away potentially from available funds for increased salary or retention issues. I don't think that's the case. I really do think this is both and. We both need these additional positions to address to changing conditions, to address changing conditions, while also needing to address compensation and retention, and I believe we can do that. Again, you know, while these positions can help address gaps we have now, I think Chief Moore also made the case that they are needed after that temporary situation is resolved with a fully staffed department, that this is a position he sought for years, in fact, before any of this, the current situation was before us. So again, we are not moving sworn personnel off the squad, we are not taking away sworn officer, or sworn personnel responsibilities. So I just don't, I think the compelling case has been made. My only remaining concern is essentially that we're hearing from the union that they like more time to talk about the details and confirm that these things are, that we've talked about tonight, are really the case. I think a week is a reasonable amount of time to delay to consider that, and so I would support that, just to try to get folks more on the same page. But I think, again, we've largely been able to address the issues that folks have always concerned about in the meeting tonight, but again, support delay. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Councilmember Smith?
Just to keep it short, I agree with everything Councilmember Flaherty said. I would be ready to vote yes on both ordinances tonight, but understand that the union would like to get a little more reassurance on what the consequences will be. So I'd be fine with postponing. with postponing. Next week's going to be late, so bring your jammies.
And protein bars. So, Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I would support both of these ordinances tonight so that it would move forward, and I will trust that the union and Chief Moore will get together and resolve these issues. I totally think you all can do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Just quickly, I would support postponing or moving to a third reading so that we have more time to understand this more fully.
Comments are getting shorter and shorter. There's like a half-life to them here. So, Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. It was very interesting hearing all this discussion tonight, and I was prepared to support both ordinances as well. But I also think, as has been the case, I think, over my legislative career, is you look for middle ground. And I think a week delay, whether I want to or not, I think that's the common ground and the best way to move forward. So I could support that.
Thank you. Who did I miss? Just me?
Oh.
Okay. I hear the urgency of this issue and this challenge, and that's why a six-week delay concerns me. I also hear the concerns about the content of some of these decisions, and that's why a week seems like a reasonable time to invest in some additional discussion. So I would be content to support a motion to postpone.
Madam Chair, I move that ordinances 2312 and 2313 be moved to third reading.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying, "Do we need a roll call vote on that?" Do we?
No.
All those in favor of a one-week postponement to June 21st, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. The ayes have it. Ordinances 2312 and ordinance 2313 will be taken up again next week on, at our regular session on Wednesday, June 21st. Thank you. And thank you all for your patience with our questions and your time for it. You're up. Yes?
I move that ordinance 2311 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to introduce, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2311 to amend Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Health and Sanitation Regarding Updating and Increasing Fees for Service and Harmonizing Chapters Four and Five of Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code. And, one moment, please. I'm terribly sorry. I didn't have the synopsis in front of me. So, the synopsis is as follows. This ordinance makes several changes to Title VI of the Bloomington Municipal Code to bring the title in line with changed local practice, to adjust service fees, to clarify references, and to harmonize current practices with the city code.
Madam Chair, I move that ordinance 2311 be adopted.
Second. Thank you. So who do we have from staff here? Oh, Mr. Wasen?
Yes. Good evening, folks. Thank you to the members of the common council. I apologize I need to be virtual this evening. Had some pre-scheduled time away from, for family vacation, but I'm glad to be here tonight. So thank you for taking the time to consider the proposed ordinance that modifies the rates for the sanitation division. I won't go through my whole presentation from last week, but will highlight the important aspects of the proposal, and will also do my best to update the council on questions that arose during the last council meeting and since. And can I check, is my audio okay?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. So as proposed and as presented last week, staff provided five rate models for consideration of the council. These models begin with a, with a, the five models begin with no reduction of the general fund support, but raising rates just to meet the rising costs we've incurred, and four models that would reduce the general fund subsidy from 25, 50, 75, or 100 percent, depending on the will of the council. The reason, the reason that rates need updating, as I mentioned, is the rising costs in both our disposal and recycling processing fees, but more significantly, just overall cost increase across the board for supplies, fuel, vehicle maintenance, as I highlighted last week. Since the inception of the new modernized sanitation program, we've had great successes. Resident satisfaction with waste disposal services have increased over time, according to the community survey. And beyond that, and most importantly to me, is that our serious injuries and workers' compensation costs have been going down since this inception of the new program about five years ago. Moving on to answer some of the questions that have arisen during the last, during last week's meeting and over the weekend. First, as much as we'd like to, I cannot give you a accurate accounting of, in what Councilmember Flaherty asked about, how many residents aren't we serving, or how many households aren't we serving? What I can comment on is that, from Councilmember Volan's comments last week about his information received from Department Head John Zodi with hand on the number of households and things, and a discrepancy in the number of accounts that sanitation services compared to some of that information. I think the discrepancies there are, there come from several different factors. First and foremost, I think the household count that we service does not include things such as private neighborhoods in Bloomington. Councilmembers may not know, we still have several private neighborhoods on our books from, I think it was early 80s and early 90s developments that were marketed, designed, and built out as private neighborhoods with private roadways, not receiving city sanitation services. I think that makes up for a small, for a portion of the discrepancy. Additionally, sanitation services, as we've talked about, is four units or less, and we don't serve residential properties above commercial. So I think that's another one of the discrepancies in those numbers. Beyond that, vacancies with CBU accounts that are shut off for vacancies, or properties that are just uninhibited, or also can make up for some of that discrepancy there. But what we're not able to provide is an exact accounting of how many residential units we're not servicing. And then, second, we did share via email earlier this afternoon to the council office some information on costs of peer community sanitation services, as well as what some of the private haulers are charging for their services here. So that was shared with the council earlier. We do feel like our proposals would be in line with that, even on some of the higher-end reductions of the general fund support. Councilmember Smith asked about how we had been working with Sound Central Community Action Program for reimbursements or for credits to utility bills for sanitation services. In 2022, we exhausted about half of the allocated funding, so about $2,200 of the $5,000, but we'll continue to promote and make sure folks know that program's available to them. Councilmember Piedmont Smith had asked for some figures about, you know, what's it cost to provide trash service, solid waste service, compared to what's it cost to provide recycling services? It's about a $300,000 difference on the high side for solid waste disposal. So all in, we're about 1.4 to 1.5 million on solid waste, and about 1.1 to 1.15 on recycling. The only, I say about, it's hard to discern exactly vehicle maintenance costs between recycle and between solid waste, because sometimes those trucks are interchanged, depending on what's available. An empty trash truck can be used for recycling, for instance, and so there's just a little bit of uncertainty there exactly on how to push those costs out for the different programs. And then Councilmember Flaherty had several great questions over the weekend, and, but wanted to, just for the council, the breakdown currently of cart sizes. So for the 35-gallon cart size, we have 6,931 accounts utilizing that. The most popular is the 64-gallon. That's about, that's 7,098 customer, or residents, and the 96-gallons, just at 822 as of most recent counts. So the smaller cart sizes, the 35 and the 64, make up the vast majority of the carts that we have out on, that residents utilize. Overall, and as we said last week, the staff-proposed starting point of the 50 percent general fund support reduction was just that. It was a starting point for conversation. Staff is very willing to have the conversations with the council about what makes the most sense, and are certainly open to that conversation. I do want to just briefly address, I do recognize that there may be, that there were two amendment proposals that have been distributed. First, from, I believe Councilmember Sciamolary proposed an amendment to possibly look at the no general fund support reduction model. Staff could certainly support that going forward. If we wanted to look at Councilmember Flaherty's proposed modified rate structure, I would probably need to ask for some more time for, I would need to ask for some more time to really dive deep into those numbers, make sure those make sense, and would likely ask to need to move that to next week as well if we want to go that route. But again, my apologies for not being in the council chambers with you this evening. I had this pre-planned travel and here to answer any questions and continue the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Wasen. Questions? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wasen. And I'm truly sorry that we're interrupting your vacation. That's not an optimal situation, obviously. I appreciate you, you were going to get us some of the updated information. I had gotten 2022 numbers, I believe, that you had provided to Councilmember Volan in the past about the number of customers per cart size, and so I had used those in some initial modeling of various phase-out timelines for the general fund subsidy. The numbers that I had from that year were 6,668, 6,162, and 675, respectively, as cart sizes go up, and that total is 13,505, which aligns with what you mentioned last week as the total number of accounts, about 13,500. But the numbers you shared this evening for current numbers, 6,931, 7,098, and 822, add up to 14,851. So I wanted to check if possible, you know, if there's maybe an error in one of those numbers, or if that reflects an increase in customer base. Just want to make sure I'm understanding.
No, that's got to, I apologize. I did not add those all up. I just got those sent over a little bit ago. I'll, let me reach out to a staff member, and we'll confirm those.
No problem.
Because we're not over 14,000 right now.
Okay. I don't think it materially changes things. I think the proportions are roughly the same, and just wanted to double-check. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Additional questions?
I move Amendment One to ordinance 2311.
It's been moved and seconded. Who, both your names are on it? Who would like to present? Councilmember Flaherty, please go ahead.
So, we didn't discuss this in advance. I would actually rather not present this amendment, given Mr. Wasen's comment that he's not ready to sign off on it as a technical matter with respect to modeling the proposed reduction phase-out schedule of the general fund subsidy. I was, I think it's sound. I was going off the 2022 numbers of customer cart breakdowns, and I took an approach that matches the current approach of pricing based on cents per gallon, and had a schedule of increasing over time, pricing each cart size at the same cents per gallon, regardless of size, again, with a schedule. And I think the revenues generated in the model are sound and roughly aligned with the numbers we have from the administration, but I couldn't confirm that without underlying assumptions and confirming with Mr. Wasen. So I just don't think we've had the ability to meaningfully explore this. I mean, the issues are still relevant, but, you know, we're just not in a position as a council to vote on this amendment tonight, in my opinion.
Did you just make next week longer?
Well, you know.
I'm teasing, I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I mean, I'm happy to withdraw the motion, but I guess I would ask my fellow sponsor, does that mean you want to postpone to next week, so that Mr. Wasen can consider it?
I mean, that's fine. I mentioned earlier that I'm not going to be here next week, and I think Mr. Sims is going to be out as well. And I wonder about Mr. Allo's ability to attend in person, for instance, and of course, we have to be in person to vote on fee increases, so that would preclude his participation if that's the case. So I'm not sure next week is optimal either. We could, I think, after recess was another proposal from Mr. Wasen, which could be a consideration, or even the first week of August, the first regular session of August. I know the proposal has us moving to a rate increase in September. I'm curious to know why that, instead of January of next year, in particular, since we've already appropriated money for this year's sanitation budget, including the million-dollar support from the general fund. So I'm curious about that timeline, and if, obviously, it has implications for budgeting for next year. So the longer we delay, the more it creates some uncertainty in that context. But, you know, I'm honestly pretty ambivalent. If we move forward tonight, I don't, I don't think we're ready to consider this amendment. I, you know, I'll vote accordingly, as we consider other amendments and the ordinance as a whole, but it's just a bad timing thing a little bit.
We have a motion in a second on the table. Do you want to withdraw that motion?
Ask permission to withdraw the motion.
Permission granted. So, all right. I actually have a question for Mr. Wasen. Could you help clarify, conversations with administration have indicated in the past, and I'm speaking of Mayor Hamilton and Deputy Mayor Carmichael, that having a response and a decision prior to our recess is critical for the budget planning that you might want to do, and that any answer before our recess is better than waiting until after. Is that still the case, or has that changed? Or could you, could you comment on that?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Council President Sciamolary. You know, our preference is to move forward with one of the models that we proposed. It is our preference. We propose those models as, as we did, because they were our preferred method of moving forward. You know, there's some fundamental differences in Councilmember Flaherty's approach to his rates, the rates that he's generated as a proposed schedule compared to what staff presented. And so, and that's, you know, that's fine, but what we're, you know, we, the longer we wait to determine what the rates are, the longer we wait to plug in the numbers for our budgets. You know, as, so, you know, would we ideally have it here before recess? Yes. That allows us more time, you know, throughout the month of July as we prepare our budget memos. If it's late July that we get an answer on this, we can plug different numbers. It just, it does crunch timelines. You know, but as I've mentioned, you know, we've got some models out there that we brought forward for a reason. And just to further comment on that is that, you know, the rate structures we provided with the ranges allow us, over time, to make adjustments if we see conditions in the field change, whether increased costs or decreased costs, for possibly. But where, where the proposals that Councilmember Flaherty and Councilmember Volan have created, look at a six-year reduction of the general fund over time with set rates each year, and that flex, there's not any flexibility within that. If we saw a sharp increase in fuel costs, for example, that really impact the budget in negative ways, you know, we might be back in front of the council pretty quickly to ask for adjustments again to the rate structure over those several years. But our preference would be to move forward with one of the models as presented. But if we need more time, what we need more time in the proposal from Councilmember Volan and Flaherty is just to dig into those numbers from our revenue needs and our operational needs, and we just haven't, we've had other staff away this week as well that haven't been able to really review those. And so that's our concern, but from a timing perspective, wouldn't be ideal to go after recess, but if we absolutely needed to, we would adjust and make do.
Thank you for that. And a related question, in terms of Amendment One and diving deeper into the model that's been proposed, would a week make a difference for you?
Yeah, I mean, yes, I do. We have staff returning from scheduled PTO as early as Friday that would be able to really begin to dive into that. So, yes, it could help us.
Okay. I'm not sure what to do now. Councilmember Flaherty?
I'm happy to opine on, you know, as one of the sponsors of the amendment, I'm inclined to... I'm inclined to move forward tonight without its consideration, considering the other amendment we have on the table, considering the ordinance as presented, and we can always work with the administration to consider this more deeply and bring back a future consideration if we want. It doesn't preclude us from doing that if we stick with sort of the status quo approach for now, or even don't change rates at all. Those all have implications for what we would budget for, for next year, but of course, if the will of the council at some point was to create a phase-out schedule that would affect the anticipated level of general fund subsidy that we appropriated, or even the amount we actually appropriated, we're not worse off for having that money to devote to something else, whether it's Jack Hopkins, or sidewalks, or other, other needs. So I personally, I guess, I just feel like the timing isn't, isn't suitable to consider the model that I've worked with Councilmember Volan to propose in like, an in-depth way. There's, I've conducted some preliminary equity-related analysis from census data. I'd like more depth on that as well. I probably need help from staff to do that. It's just, it's going to take more time, and I, I also feel the need to resolve this for the purpose of budgeting, so I guess my feeling is that we kind of need to separate those conversations at this point. That's just my opinion. I don't know if Councilmember Volan feels the same.
Nope, you have opined. Thank you. So, additional comments? I'm going to turn the gavel over to Vice President Piedmont Smith. The Amendment 2 was prepared at my request, and I'd like to introduce that now, so I'd like to move the introduction of Amendment 2. Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have access to the slides from Mr. Wasen's presentation last week? And if so, could we go to the proposal to adjust service fees model? Thank you. Amendment 1 essentially proposed, as you see up here, you have current rates, 651, 1161, and 1852. Amendment 1 essentially, well, the legislation as it's currently written proposes a 50% general fund support reduction. What Amendment 1 proposes is essentially, Amendment 2, I'm sorry. Amendment 2 proposes is no general for, support, general fund support reduction. I've discussed this at the last couple constituent meetings I've had and gotten some feedback in that arena, and one of the clear themes that keeps coming up in conversations I've had in those meetings and elsewhere is that by and large, residents understand the need for cost increases. They understand that fuel is more expensive. They understand that maintenance of our equipment may often have costs that escalate over time. So there are not, I've not encountered many reservations about increasing fees based on increased costs. What I have heard is concern about reducing general fund subsidies particularly right now. I don't know that I would rule them out forever, rule out a reduction in general fund subsidies forever, but particularly in light of our recent increase in the ED Lit, particularly in light of having removed and reduced the services provided through the leafing program, particularly in light of a referendum that will come up this fall for the Monroe County Community School Corporation. It seems to me that now is not a time to reduce general fund support for this very basic foundational city service. So that is the source of this. I will be happy to take the will of the council on this, and, but that is essentially the logic behind this, and I wanted to essentially give council another option to look at besides the 50% reduction proposed by the administration. So, that's what I'd offer. I'm happy to take questions, but I think I've kind of shared my thinking and what was behind this. Councilmember Sandberg?
Well, two amendments on the table. Is this something that you're prepared to wait a week to, to fully hash out, or is this something we want to deliberate on this evening? I'm not quite sure procedurally what we're doing here.
Mr. Lucas, could you comment?
And then I believe withdrawn with unanimous consent of the council, so now you've got Amendment 2 on the table. You can proceed with this how you wish. So if that's.
Or we could withdraw it in favor of postponement.
There is no motion to postpone.
You wouldn't need to withdraw it necessarily. If you would just like to postpone the ordinance with this amendment pending, you could do that. If you'd like to dispose of the amendment tonight, you could certainly do that as well.
Point of order?
Yes, Councilmember Volan.
The, under, under, again, our new scheme, it's perfectly appropriate to send it to a third reading. We don't have to postpone it. This is, should be the normal thing that we, I think we should be doing everything with a third reading, but this is certainly a good example of something that isn't easy to dispose of. It's complicated. It should have a third reading, whether that's next week or after recess. That's up to the council, but we don't need to postpone it. We're just sending it to another reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Councilmember Scamblerie, the sponsor of this amendment? Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, just a point of clarification to you that we did have a committee, the whole meeting on this, so it is not quite, we had a committee of the whole meeting on this already, so it's not quite the same vote as our typical second reading. Additionally, I did have a question, probably for Mr. Wasen, which has to do with the motivation for the structure of the, of the, all the, all the proposals from, from his department. So currently, the approach to rates has been a constant price per gallon for every cart size. That's 19 cents right now, leading to rates of 651 for 35 gallons, 1161 for 64 gallons, and 1852 for the 96 gallon. This proposed change, the one of this amendment in particular, would take the 35 gallon to 23 cents per gallon, would take the 64 gallon to 25 cents per gallon, and the 96 gallon would go to 30 cents per gallon. So you see that in the progressive cost structure. You know, there's potentially some logic to that of various kinds of things. There's pros and cons to be weighed. So I wanted to ask what the policy conversation was like internally that led to that shift in policy from the current constant pricing per gallon scheme to a structure that has higher price per gallon for the larger cart sizes.
Yes, I appreciate that, Councilmember Flaherty. What I, what I would say is that in our initial fee structure proposals with the sanitation modernization program, we looked at it from three different perspectives, that, making up the rate from three different perspectives. A fixed rate for all households that receive the service, a capital recovery rate, and a per gallon rate. And in all practicality, it didn't, when you took out the fixed rate and the capital recovery fee, the per gallon rate was meant to be progressive to encourage waste reduction. In actual practice, what we realized very quickly over time as costs increased was that the capital recovery fee wasn't there. We didn't have a capital recovery fee, the non-reverting fund for that or anything. So the costs were continually absorbed, the, and, and, you know, and as I stated in our last meeting, you know, when we were trying to buy one truck per year, we were only able to buy one truck every two years. So that, the reason we formalized it with this rate structure was because we recognized we weren't meeting that capital recovery fee, the intent of the capital recovery fee. So we've formalized it to be just a more, a higher cost per gallon for the highest, higher producers of waste in the community. So that's the intent behind that, and kind of the underlying assumptions of what we previously were, you know, trying to achieve with the rate structure that just didn't come to fruition as we incurred all those increased costs.
Can I follow up? Thank you. I'm not sure I fully understand still. It's almost like the, I would expect to see the opposite if there was a, a flat fee, if there was a flat, flat, capital recovery fee and whatever the other fee was, it'd be like a portion of each rate would be the same, and then progressive on top of that, leading to a progressive rate structure overall. But how does moving from a constant rate to a progressive rate reflect an addition of a capital recovery fee, which I assume, is the, is the capital recovery fee itself progressive?
No, that was across, not in the original rate structure, no. It was just the same across all categories.
Okay. Should we be thinking of these?
Sorry, go ahead.
Are these rates based on, like, the underlying calculations and spreadsheet, you know, for the, for the development of these rates? Does it have three components? Is it two flat fees that are common to all three cart sizes, and then a progressive price per gallon fee on top of that? Or that's not how I should be thinking about this?
No, we did that once, we did away with that as the concept, once we realized it didn't work under the last. So that's, that's why we landed where we have, where, you know, the way we're looking at these budgeted numbers is that, and these revenue structures is that it would allow us to meet the capital recovery needs, but without formalizing different cost, or different rate, portions of the rate for that. It's just the overall rate now.
Got it. That's helpful. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions on Amendment 2? All right. We can go to the public then. Are there any public comments on Amendment 2? So this is the amendment to allow a rate increase, but only to cover increased costs and not to reduce the subsidy from our general fund. Mr. Lucas, can you please invite people on Zoom to comment on Amendment 2?
Yes, happily. If there are folks that would like to speak to this amendment, please let us know by using the raise hand feature, which you can find in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab, or by sending, you can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Is there anyone in council chambers who would like to speak to the amendment? I see none. Mr. Lucas, are there any online?
No takers online.
All right. I'll wait just another moment. Well, then we come back to council for comments from council members on Amendment 2. Are there any comments from members of the council? Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Thanks. I won't be supporting the amendment because I would favor the ordinance as written over the proposed amendment version. On balance, I actually prefer something different entirely, which would be to probably phase out the subsidy as a, a sort of middle ground approach to avoiding any sort of sudden price jump, but at the same time, working to address the underlying inequities of who is disproportionately benefited and burdened by the current policy design. So, in short, I don't support the amendment. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Well, I will be supporting Amendment 2. Of the options on the table, it's the only one that I can vote for on good conscience.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I'll be supporting Amendment Number 2. It also makes sense to me, and I have yet to have a satisfactory explanation from anybody about why we are getting rid of the subsidy, so I'm going to support Amendment 2.
Other council comments? Councilmember Volan?
Like with Councilmember Flaherty, because I was sponsoring another amendment, I won't support this one. I do think that, I mean, I, I take Councilmember Smith's concern seriously, that I, that I know he doesn't understand why, why anyone would propose it, but I do think that, again, we have the same issue with some neighborhood parking zones where some people are locked out of being able to participate in the city service, that other people get simply by dint of the attachedness or the detachedness of their residents. And I, I take it as important that the city do sanitation for the sake of public health, but I don't believe that the way we're doing it, especially with the modernized system that we've moved to, is better than having paid, I mean, from a financial perspective, than having paid orange tags and people throw away paper per bag of trash. That was probably the best way from a financial perspective. This is the best way from a logistical perspective, but now I think we need to fix the financing, so I can't support it. I'm still going to be pushing for an amendment that, that scales up over time rather than leaves a range open for the Board of Public Works to, to fill in. Thank you.
Any other comments from council members? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I'd like to ask Councilmember Scambler, has there been any thought? That's something that's not here. If you wanted to exchange a larger cart for a smaller cart, and maybe Mr. Wasen can, what is the fee for that?
Mr. Wasen can answer that better than I can?
$50.
So if I want to go from a 96 gallon to a 32, it's going to cost me 50 bucks?
Yes, sir.
And then I'm still going to get charged? I mean, if we're going to raise the rates, wouldn't you exchange? Wouldn't that be good customer service exchange? And I know I'm off the amendment a little bit, but, see, that's what's confusing to me. I mean, it's hard for me to support any of this anyway. I thought the Amendment 1 with the graduated effect was a little bit more palatable over $50, huh? I mean, and one of the things, I mean, I have a next-door neighbor, 80-year-old lady by herself, and she got one of those at the beginning, and she, and she got a big trashcan and a small recycle.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Sims, we're talking about the amendment now.
I just asked Mr. Wasen a question. I understand that, and it's not in here, so I was asking for clarification on the cost to exchange carts that's not listed here. So that means I can't ask that question because it's not here?
You already asked.
I know I did.
I was trying to refocus you.
Well, no, no, no. I want to know that. And he said 50 bucks, so we're done. I'll pass, we're 50 bucks.
I was going to suggest that the question is appropriate after the amendment for the ordinance as a whole, whether amended or not. I want to hear the answer too, but it's, it should come after the amendment, I think.
The question has been asked and answered, I believe. Is that right, Councilmember Sims?
That's right, Councilmembers Piedmont Smith.
All right.
50 bucks.
Right. Councilmember Sims, did you, are you done?
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
Are there any other first round comments? Councilmember Rosenbarger, do you have a comment on the amendment?
I don't think so.
Okay, you do not. Well, Councilmember Scamblerie, do you have a comment on the amendment?
Nothing further than what I've already shared.
Well, then I'll, I'll take a, I'll take an opportunity to comment on Amendment 2. I was not here last week, so my comments may be a little bit longer than, than others. So, well, I tried to be here last week from a bus in the mountains. It didn't work very well. Anyway, I am opposed to Amendment 2. I feel strongly that the subsidy from the general fund to pay for sanitation services is not equitable. Sanitation services are only provided by the city to people in single-family homes or in buildings that have four or fewer apartment units in them. And the revenues that make up our general fund are paid by the tax base as a whole. So anybody who works in Bloomington, anybody who pays property taxes directly or indirectly in Bloomington contributes to our general fund, and yet only a small subset of those, well, only a subset of those people actually benefit from this service. So, for example, somebody who lives in an apartment building with, you know, 20 units, as part of their rent, they are paying for the trash pickup given by a private company to that apartment building. So by subsidizing the trash pickup of somebody in a single-family home with money from the general fund, we are basically. we are basically asking that apartment dweller to not only pay for their own trash pickup, but to help pay for the trash pickup of somebody, of the people living in single family homes or buildings with four or fewer units. And that is not fair. I feel like the, there is an additional equity component in that most people who live in apartment buildings have less money than, lower incomes than people who live in single family homes. So not only are they paying more than their share of sanitation services, they're paying for their own and part of somebody else's, but they are already cost burdened more in general than people in single family homes. So I feel like that is not good public policy. I have spoken with colleagues who feel like sanitation is a public benefit to everybody, even people who don't get the service. I do feel like sanitation is a public benefit, but it's also a private benefit. The city could just as well make a rule that everybody has to have a private contract to pick up trash and could ensure a sanitary city in that manner. But the system we have now is to pick up trash only from those single family homes and the buildings with four or fewer units. And given that that's our system now, we need to be equitable in how we charge for those services. Therefore, I think the general fund subsidy needs to be reduced, and that's why I'm against Amendment Two. Any other comments on Amendment Two? If not, I will ask for Clerk Bolden to call the roll on Amendment Two, to Ordinance 2311.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No.
Sims?
Passed.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
No.
And Flaherty?
Okay, that amendment fails with a vote of 3, 4, 1. And I'll turn the gavel back over to President Scamblerie.
Thank you. So that takes us back to Ordinance 2311 in its current form. We've had, we've kind of had all over kind of discussion. But some of the discussion has also focused on postponing this for a week. So Councilmember Flaherty?
Are we sort of reasonably in debate and discussing like how we would like to approach things from here?
I think we're closer to that than anything else.
I guess I wanted, so based on sentiments expressed by folks so far, I have a feeling that the unamended ordinance may also not have a majority of council members willing to support it this evening. I guess what I'd like to say is that even if we were to pass the ordinance as written tonight, I am still very much interested in returning and amending with a new approach, a phase out schedule more similar to Amendment One, modified, you know, slightly with input from the administration and Mr. Wasen's department, as well as potentially addressing an accompanying issue that Mr. Sims just raised, which has to do with cart change fees that could possibly be absorbed within the overall cost of the programming, and especially in the context of increasing prices and giving folks an option to downsize at no cost in that context. So that would require a new ordinance as well. All of which is to say, I still favor that approach as avoiding sort of the price shock component of reduced general fund subsidy support by phasing it over time. I think it's a reasonable middle ground to help us get to other, to addressing the opportunity costs of that money essentially, being able to use it for other things with a much more strong equity and public benefit component as we make that money available. So, all that to say, I just wanted members to be aware of that, I guess, in the context of voting for the ordinance as written. So, you know, even if we don't pass it and we are sticking for now with the current rates, that just increases the level of subsidy needed in the general fund for planning for next year's budget. So maybe instead of 1 million, that's 1.25 million or 1.4 million, you know, which is what it is. It's already sort of based on just a historical anomaly. There's not a particular policy rationale for a million dollars, as we found out last week in asking that question. So, just reflecting on where I'd like to go with this, and I would, of course, support the ordinance as written tonight, but be in favor of substituting a phase out fee schedule more similar to Amendment One later this year, if that was the will of the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger, and then Councilmember Volin.
Thank you. I would like to, I think, talk with everyone about the idea of postponing until after recess because, right, tonight we have eight, and next week we have two council members who are not attending and potentially two on Zoom. So, you know, we have to be in person to vote, so that is pretty bleak for next week. I think there are a lot of items that we could potentially flesh out between now and when we come back that would maybe allow us to not have to bring something again, you know, in the months, in the last months of the year. So, I don't know, I am interested in hearing what folks think about postponing until after recess.
About?
Postponing until after recess.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin.
Interesting thought. I want to generally concur with what Councilmember Flaherty just said. But I also want to thank Mr. Sims for bringing up the issue, re-bringing up the issue of incentivizing people to reduce their waste by waiving the fee for going down in cart size. I would like to see, it would be a great trick to see somebody go from 96 gallon to 35 gallon. I mean, somebody is really doing a great job of reducing their trash if they go straight from that to that. But having said that, I don't think that we have to keep this vehicle alive to encourage the administration to bring us a new ordinance for first reading the Wednesday after recess in late July. I think it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. I just assume if we're not going to pass this as is, but we want to see something else, this is, I mean, I don't see the need to keep this vehicle open, especially because I'd like to see something that, I mean, I acknowledge that we're sitting here trying to eliminate all subsidy. On the other hand, we also want to use the fee structure to be strategic about getting people to think about their trash and to use less. So waiving the cart fee for going down in size is something we should be considering. And I feel like it'd be better if we brought a clean bill back. So I am not going to support postponement, and I'm not going to support this ordinance. But I would support the administration coming back. And I'd be happy to co-author the ordinance with something for first reading, whatever. What is the date of post-recess?
July 26th.
July 26th. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize. I didn't allow for public comment prior to doing that, and I apologize for that. That's my oversight. Is there comment here in chambers? Mr. Lucas, could you extend the invitation on Zoom for comments on Ordinance 2311?
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to speak to Ordinance 2311, please let us know by using the raise hand feature, which you can find in your control bar by clicking the reactions button or the more button. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
And Mr. Lucas, are you seeing anyone on Zoom?
Not a lot of them.
Okay, we have one commenter here, if you would.
Carol Canfield. Carol Canfield, as I was listening to Councilmember Piedmont Smith and hearing her say that only the single family dwellings should be charged. I don't have kids, but I'm paying taxes for the schools. And if I did have kids, they wouldn't be going to public school, but I would still be paying the taxes for them. I don't see the difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone on Zoom?
I don't believe so, no.
And is there, I'm not seeing any comment here in chambers? Okay, let's come back to council and continue with comments again. Sorry, I missed that. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. Just kind of respond to Councilmember Volin. He's absolutely correct. To go from the big one to the small one would be phenomenal. And I'm not suggesting there's a whole bunch of them out there. My direct next door neighbor and many older, out in Highland Village, older area that I live in, when it first started, I think many people weren't clear. So it's just an incentive to rightly, or as the term many people want to say, right-size their trash reduction. But my comment is, it's still very difficult for me to support something that I consider to be a basic city service. But having listened to all of my colleagues, I understand the cost involved and the need to reduce subsidies to a point. Now, that's one reason why I liked Amendment, whichever one it was. I wish we could mix them together, but, because there's some things, but Councilmember Volin and Councilmember Flaherty's, the way it graduated over time, I think, you know, that's less burdensome to a part of the population. I think sometimes when we say equity, I don't think sometimes we think about the other half, the haves and the have-nots in this town. I mean, and I know we do. I'm not suggesting anybody don't do that. But I think when you think about trash fee increases, possible referendum increases. We did a lit increase, and next year we're going to be talking about a water, or I'm sorry, a storm sewer rate increase. You know, I mean, when we do all these in a vacuum, you see, it's simple. But when you add them all together, I mean, it's the folks, a lot of the people that are, and many of us will be able to withstand that. Haves and have-nots. Some of us in the middle and up can withstand it. I'm really more concerned about those that are going to have a financial burden in meeting all of these obligations as we go. So that's my only intent, and that's my comment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Smith?
Well, I've always been against this idea. And my friend Adam, he's a Sox fan, but I know you do a good job. But social equity doesn't equate to homeowners being charged a higher fee for trash pickup. It just doesn't work like that. Homeowners pay more taxes in the form of property taxes, help pay for services, including general fund funding for trash pickup. Renters pay for their trash pickup, yeah, through their rent. And so if we start increasing homeowners' trash pickup, it's going to put upward pressure on private trash haulers, and renters' rent is going to go up. Look, citizens pay for schools when they don't have children in schools, pay for parks, municipal swimming pools when they don't use them, they don't go swimming, and they're happy to do that. And they pay for dog parks when they don't have a dog. They pay for bike lanes when they don't ride bikes. Why? Well, it's for the good of the community. So, you know, is it more, is it good to make it more expensive to live in Bloomington? It's not, that's not really good for the community. You know, and getting rid of the subsidy, I want to know why Mayor Hamilton wants to take away the general fund subsidy. Yeah, Director Wasen has talked about how the, you know, the department runs lean and needs to add more employees, and, you know, we might need more trucks, and we need people to fix it. I just don't, I don't get that. You know, has the fund, a million dollar, almost a million dollar subsidy been earmarked for another project in the city? I don't know. Do they want to use it to help convert the showers building? I don't know. Do they want it for the convention center? I don't know. Okay, I've said my piece. I'm against raising fees for essential city services, especially when the city's in pretty darn good financial shape. And, you know, that goes for, you know, picking up the trash fees too. You know, I can only hope, I'm not going to be here, I can only hope that the incoming mayor, Mayor Thompson and her administration and the new city council just focuses on essential services and tries to keep Bloomington a city that is affordable for everybody. And I'm worried about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thanks. I don't know how I'm going to vote tonight. And I think, in a way, it doesn't matter if the big plan is to revisit this in some way, if we do vote tonight, I would say. Either we would keep the subsidy the way it is, or we would reduce it in some way. Just some trash thoughts, I would say, that this is a really, I think this is a really big and complex topic that we're talking about here. And just like, as Councilmember Sims was talking about, we generate a lot of waste. Looking at the number from Mr. Wasen's slides, in 2017, we had 5,000 tons, and now we're over 8,000 tons. And, you know, we are living in a world where we have to put this trash somewhere. So looking at creative ways and like more equitable ways to incentivize waste reduction is a really big deal for me. And I think we do that in some ways, but we could do that in other ways. Like as Councilmember Sims pointed out, maybe we should allow for a free switch out of a can, a bin. But then maybe we should charge more for extra pickups, you know, if people are switching down a bin but still generating more. Or as the person who commented in public said, I mean, at public comments said, you know, a single person barely, might barely generate any trash. And like, what if we do change to some kind of pay-as-you-throw operation where if you only need to put your bin out once a month, then you only pay for that bin being out once a month? I think, in general, I think a lot of people here are on board with reducing the subsidy. I mean, we are now a city that has no way for a lot of people to reduce their waste by putting their food scraps somewhere. And that is something else that's just going to cost a lot of money. But it's very important that we somehow, as a city, I think, figure that out. So I think we are on the right page here, and like we're having very good conversations around, like what can we do? And how can we, you know, make potentially small changes over time to the way we collect trash and incentivize less waste in our city?
Additional comments? Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, I want to remind everyone a couple of things. First of all, if there were no city trash service, then every household in town would be paying at least our current 96 gallon rate, if not a higher rate than that. We established that that's roughly the rate that private haulers charge. So just by having trash service at all with more than one bin, let alone charging the relatively low rates that we've charged, we've been doing the city a service, number one. Number two, you know, we, our taxes do pay for schools, and not everyone has kids. But this is a service that for decades has been a fee for service and not simply, I mean, we don't pay à la carte for every service, but this is one where we do. And we know that charging for it regulates it, that we charge for it partly to make sure that people think about their trash. And so it was right that we started charging for parking. But I wanted to suggest that if we were to wait for a new ordinance to come back right after recess, the administration would also be closer to its budget numbers and to know what kind of budget it's looking at. The question of carts, the question of extra pickups, I think they should all be into a more comprehensive menu of prices that we thought about harder. And I'm happy to join in meetings during recess to discuss some changes with anyone else who might like to, you know, and to work with the administration to develop a new ordinance. But I just feel like this one is a little premature. And I think we need, I mean, I don't think we have to go all the way back to the drawing board square one. I think we need to rethink this ordinance and add some of the other fees that several of us think ought to be contemplated in a new rate structure. So for that reason, I'm going to be voting against postponement and voting against the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, just reflecting on what Councilmember Rosenbarger said about, you know, we have a lot of waste, and it's, it's not sustainable, and it's, it's bad for the environment in many ways, hauling it, bringing it to a landfill that produces methane, et cetera, et cetera. One, one idea that, that I had, and it's that opportunity cost, that we're currently spending $900,000 to subsidize sanitation services for one group of our residents. We could, for example, use that to expand the restaurant composting program that had a pilot this past year in partnership with Earth Mama Composting in Indianapolis, which we've started talking with, or encouraging some local compost enterprise to set up shop here to replace earth keepers. I mean, that $900,000, that's annually, and that could go a long way in reducing our waste, and that really would benefit everybody in the community and the planet. I, I may be the only person up here that would actually vote in favor of this ordinance if nobody postpones it. I think it's, it's, it's better to, to start reducing that, that subsidy and better to have a decision so that the, that opportunity cost that I'm talking about could actually be considered, and we can actually have time to think about what we want to spend that money on instead in the 2024 budget. So I'm going to vote in favor, even though that seems like a lost cause at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay, if not, I'll finish up. As I've already shared, I, I support increases in fees that cover existing, that cover cost increases, and I sense a general understanding among residents that costs of trash service increase over time, just as everything else does. So I would certainly support that. I can't support at this point a 58% increase in 35-gallon fees, 76% for 64-gallon, and 95% for 96-gallon, and that's currently where we are with this piece of legislation. So I, I think in a sense, there, there is much more discussion to come, and I look forward to that because this is a complicated issue. And I think this particular legislation, as it has come to us, doesn't necessarily contemplate multiple moving parts. So I look forward to those discussions, but I would not be supporting this particular legislation this evening. So, any additional comments? Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll on Ordinance 2311. Councilmember Sims?
No.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Scambalory?
No.
Sandberg?
No.
Smith?
No.
Volin?
No.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
That fails three, five. And then that, thank you, and that takes us to legislation for first readings. There are none this evening. That takes us to our second of two periods of public comment. This is for items not on the agenda. Are there any, is there anyone here in chambers who would like to offer public comment? I'm seeing none. Mr. Lucas, could you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there is a public, still with us on Zoom that would like to speak, please let us know by using the raise hand feature, under your control bar by clicking the reactions tab or the more tab, or sending a chat to the meeting host.
Okay, and let's give that a moment. Okay, and seeing none here in council, that'll conclude that second period of public comment. That take, so let's take up matters of council schedule. Couple items here, last week we had a conversation about the second budget advance. We elected to cancel that to allow some council members who had an interest in the college Walnut Corridor meeting on Tuesday night. My understanding last week is that there was not necessarily an interest in rescheduling an additional budget advance at this point. Is that accurate, or is there a desire to schedule another budget advance? Eh, I'm, I'm hearing eh. So, all right, then, so we won't move forward with any kind of scheduling in that. Mr. Lucas, anything else for us?
Yes, just a note, because we have been talking about postponing and, and next week's schedule, Ordinance 2310 was tabled at a previous meeting. I'm anticipating that next week there may be a motion to take that from the table to bring it back up to the council, in particular because the 90-day window for the council to act in response to the Plan Commission's recommendation is up on July 17th. So next week is the last scheduled meeting you all have before that 90-day window is up, so I'm anticipating that ordinance returning to, to the council next week. That is all.
Talking maximums. Okay.
And I believe Ms. Scanlon will be anticipating that motion as well, and will be attending next week.
And that'll be with us next week. Good. Anything else?
That is all.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none. Thank you very much, everyone. We are, we are adjourned.